Good evening. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for October 7th, 2019. Call upon Councilmember Bob Pfeifer.
Thank you. If everyone would please join me in a silent, moment of silent reflection. And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Kristen Rush, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Proton Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here, I don't think your mic's on.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
I'm sorry. And Councilmember McGough?
Here.
Thank you.
All present and accounted for. Next, we have the minutes from September 16th, 2019. That was my wife's birthday. She was really pleased that I was here instead of taking her out to a nice dinner, but... I did make it up to her, trust me, I made it up to her. Minutes will stand approved as presented. Next, we have a proclamation by Councilmember Dot Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. October is National Arts and Humanities Month, a coast-to-coast collective recognition of the importance of culture in America. The nation's 95,000 nonprofit arts organizations, the National Endowment for the Arts, the National Endowment for the Humanities, the nation's 4,500 local arts agencies, and the Arts and Humanities Councils of the 50 states and the six U.S. jurisdictions have regularly issued official proclamations on the annual basis. This initiative was first launched over 30 years ago by the Americans for the Arts, and I think I've got a representative from the Arvada Center here to... Yay, there you are, come on down here to the podium and I'll read this proclamation from the city of Arvada. Whereas the arts and humanities embody much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, enhancing and enriching lives of all; and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country; and whereas the arts provide transformative creative experiences for all people through the support of local, regional, and national partners such as National Endowment for the Arts, the Scientific and Cultural Facilities District, and the local arts organization; and whereas the humanities help diverse communities across the United States explore their history and culture with the support and partnership of the National Endowment for the Humanities, the 55 state and territorial humanities councils, and the educational and cultural institutions; and whereas the arts and cultural industry also strengthens our economy by generating $166.3 billion in total economic activity annually, $26 billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 5 million jobs. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, that October 2019 be designated National Arts and Humanities Month. We call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture and encourage greater participation by taking action for the arts and humanities. This proclamation is dated the 7th day of October and is signed by the mayor and members of council. I'll bring it down to you.
On behalf of everyone at the Arvada Center for the Arts and Humanities and all of us who are arts and culture lovers and members of the arts and culture community, I would like to offer my gratitude to the city of Arvada, the mayor of Arvada, and the Arvada City Council for this proclamation and recognizing the importance of the arts and humanities, and not just our community, but our region and our country. Thank you very much for this.
And while we're on the subject, I would urge everybody to go see Plaza Suite, a great new production at the Arvada Center. Saw it opening night last weekend, it's a great, great show. Now we'll move on to public comment, and I've got a couple people signed up, and one of those individuals has signed up to speak about a resolution that we have coming up on ballot issue 1A. If there's other members of the public that would like to address city council on that other than the presenter, I think we're going to have the sheriff or someone from his office perhaps speak during that time, but if others wish to speak on that topic, please do so now during public comment. I'll first call on Linda Behringer.
Hi, my name is Linda Behringer, I live in Arvada, Colorado. I'm here on behalf of Heading Home, I'm chair of Heading Home, which is a collaboration of law enforcement, service providers, faith community, concerned citizens, organized to address the issue of homelessness in Jefferson County. Several years ago, we developed a plan, 2014, and part of that plan was to develop a severe weather response, to shelter people from the cold. The response includes motel vouchers, rotating churches, and at one time included a family shelter. Currently, we're... We lost the family shelter, so we're currently operating with motel vouchers and rotating churches. Last year, in the 2018-19 season, we had 57 nights of weather that were considered life-threatening, which is when it's below 32 and wet, or below 20 degrees. We sheltered 694 households in Jefferson County, potentially saving their lives or preventing them from incurring frostbite or other ailments from the cold. So what I'm here to talk to you tonight about is an immediate, urgent situation where we're asking elected officials to work with code officials and consider changes to the adopted codes and regulations which would allow churches and buildings to be used as shelters for the homeless population. We understand that building and fire code officials must enforce the requirements of the code, and temporary measures have been put in place in previous seasons, but in the last season, it was determined that without an amendment to the fire code, that sheltering would not be allowed in churches. And that is primarily where we're doing the sheltering during severe weather. We also only have 15 regular shelter beds, emergency shelter beds in Jefferson County, and those are also in churches, so it impacts our regular shelter beds as well as our severe weather shelter beds. So we're asking that you accept these changes when the regulation amendment comes before you. I know the Arvada Fire District is working on an amendment, and understand that this need is urgent, and the response is also urgent, as we're facing severe weather on Thursday this week, so... Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I'll call on Katie Winner.
I'm Katie Winner. And I'm a problem. I've been a problem ever since I came here to Arvada from New York in 2013, lured across the Mississippi into Colorado's booming economy with a lower cost of living and a better quality of life. And while our east coast friends couldn't fathom why we leave the Big Apple, and we promised our mothers we'd be back if things didn't work out, we love our Arvada community, and we have no plans on leaving. But what once was cheap turns out to be expensive, and the once blessing of paying one-fourth less in property taxes than I would have paid in my native New York has turned out to be my worst nightmare. For every election season since planting roots in Arvada, I voted yes on just about every ballot measure that has sought to maintain, sustain, or greatly improve my quality of life here. I voted yes on roads, I voted yes on schools, I voted yes on fire, and this fall, I'll be voting yes on ballot issue 1A for Jefferson County government. This transplant doesn't want to be accused of not helping to pay for the growth she has participated in. I'm voting yes because our Jefferson County government has been good stewards of our tax dollars. There have been budget freezes, there have been eternal efficiencies and savings, but never a budget deficit so wide that even our public safety, sheriff's office, and DA's office have been asked to make substantial cuts. Yes, your Jeffco government didn't want you to feel any pain, so for the past years, they've figured out how to work within their budgets. That is no longer an option. The failure of 1A will affect Arvada in many ways. The two most critical areas are the availability of jail beds and road maintenance programs. The core function of Jefferson County government is to protect the safety, health, and well-being of its residents and provide sound fiscal stewardship. There will be reductions in jail sentencing, and felons who would have found a bed in the county jail won't. Longer waits at planning and zoning, backups at elections and votings, and cuts to other services that we have grown to depend upon. And with every tax increase or perceived threat to Tabor, there will be dissenters, those whose napkin math is better than any county officials, those who will tell you that this is a spending problem, that the county has got it all wrong, that there's plenty of money, and the cuts are just a scare tactic to write a blank check to government. And while some may choose to vote their wallet, this fall, I'll be voting my values. Because I value being safe. I value being a community that supports the greater good of all residents, and I'm willing to pay for the quality of life I've come to know in Jefferson County. So tonight, I hope that our council will vote yes. Vote yes on your resolution to support 1A and continue the quality of life we all have come to know here in Arvada. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Michael Martinez Shifrell.
Or Shifrell?
Yes.
Good evening.
Does this work?
Yeah, can you turn it on?
Members of city council, my name is Michael Martinez Shifrell, and I'm here to talk about the short-term rentals ordinance that's having a first reading today. My wife and I moved to Old Town in 2013. We're active community members, and my wife organizes a monthly trash pickup that we call Keep Old Town Beautiful. Some of you have actually come out and joined us. In May of 2017, our next-door neighbors moved to Grand Lake and began renting their house as a short-term rental on Airbnb. We have two years of experience actually living directly next door to a short-term rental. Over the years, we've tried to talk to our neighbors to resolve issues, but they have become less responsive to us. They do not live on the premises, and they're not invested in our community anymore. Safety, living next to an active short-term rental is like living next to neighbors who always party, but that you never get to know. Safety is a key concern, especially when recreational drugs are in the mix. Visitors are often from out of state and are not familiar with Colorado's laws. On at least half a dozen occasions, we've watched as guests have smoked pot, maybe in the backyard, and then walked into the front yard to get into a car, a driver's seat of a car, and actually drive away. And those are kind of scary situations for us. Many hotels, as you may know, do not allow the use of recreational marijuana, and therefore those from out of state seeking to use recreational drugs oftentimes resort to short-term rentals. Finally, the intensity of use for short-term renters of recreational drugs is very high compared to our other neighbors who occasionally use, right? So it's something that's constantly happening next to you if it's going on. So I want to point out that the current draft ordinance, in our opinion and experience, just doesn't go far enough to protect the safety of our neighborhoods. The two, you know, based on our experience, two proposed amendments that I have here on the screen to the short-term rental ordinance that I'd like you to possibly consider are one, the adoption of an amendment to the ordinance prohibiting the use of recreational marijuana or short-term rentals. So these aren't just private property, they're also places of business, and that's why I think that should be considered. And/or, if that's not acceptable, or and just to keep this, you know, really strengthen the safety, I think a second amendment would be an adoption of basically an amendment that a short-term rental license shall be revoked or not renewed if a property has three or more reports of incidents that impact the safety of neighbors or community within a two-year period of time. So thanks for considering how to keep our communities safe as you consider this draft ordinance. I have copies of this in paper.
If you'll give it to the city clerk, I was hoping you did, so if you'll give it to the city clerk, we'll make sure we get it, and I assume you'll probably come back and testify when we're considering this ordinance.
I hope I'll be able to.
Good, thank you. Okay, those are the individuals that I had signed up for public comment on, not on the issues of wild grass, commercial filing two, and the Candelas filing number two issues, which will have those public comments and testimony during those public hearings. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council at this time, either on 1A or any other issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, and we'll move on to our new business. We have several items on the consent agenda. The first is a resolution authorizing an employment agreement by and between the city of Arvada and Rachel A. Morris is our new city attorney. Next item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between the city of Arvada and Ma'keah and Harry Parker for lease of the Arvada Indoor Equestrian Center located at 7650 Indiana Street. Next one is a resolution authorizing a wireless communications facilities master license agreement between the city of Arvada and Verizon Wireless for the purpose of locating small cell facilities in the public right-of-way. Next one is a resolution authorizing a construction contract between the city of Arvada and Concrete Express for the Wadsworth Boulevard right-turn lanes at 68th Avenue to 74th Avenue, projected in an amount not to exceed approximately $2.1 million. And the final consent agenda item is a resolution authorizing a change order, order number two, to an agreement between Arvada and Golden Triangle Construction to expand the scope of work and increase the contract amount by an additional approximately $129,000 for construction of the Delta Sector Community Police Station. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Ford?
I move that all remaining consent items be approved.
Motion's for approval of the consent agenda? All votes cast. That passes seven to zero, thank you. Next, we'll consider Resolution 2019-989, R. 19091, a resolution endorsing Measure 1A permitting Jefferson County to retain and spend or reserve all revenues received during 2020 and expiring after 2026. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as instructed by council, we have placed this resolution on tonight's agenda. I know that there are people who will be speaking formally to you about this. I would just simply add that we are recommending approval of the resolution endorsing Measure 1A. We listed the impacts associated with the impacts, or the reductions to Jefferson County government, and we cited some examples of where we believe that that would impact the city of Arvada and other communities in Jefferson County, certainly along the lines of public service impacts, general service impacts, and other public health and well-being impacts. And then the final thing I would say is that certainly as we formulated this recommendation, we understand the public policy concerns associated with placing limitations on Tabor, which is considered to be one of the most significant constitutional amendments approved by voters in Colorado, as well as recognized as a landmark fiscal control measure throughout the United States. Our team also recognizes that Arvada voters approved a similar measure in 1996 that allowed city government to retain general fund resources, which has enabled our community to keep up with, keep the level of service consistent, so... And we also based our recommendation on the fact that we believe these impacts will have, some Jefferson County government operations will have impact on city government. So that's the basis of our recommendation, and certainly we're available to answer any questions from council.
Very good. Do we have a presenter on this issue?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, councilors, thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name's Jeff Schrader, I'm the Jefferson County Sheriff, and I know that I've met all of you over the course of the last number of years in different fashions or another. Thank you, Mr. Devon, for that recommendation that you made to council. I am asking that you as individuals, and you as a council, also support this resolution, and more importantly, ballot issue 1A. My focus is on public safety, and has been for the last 36 years, as I've been with the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office, and I've been the county sheriff for the last five. In my 36 years with the county sheriff's office, we have not been ever put on notice or experienced a budget cut. There have been times when we have been frozen, but we've never experienced a budget cut. And so earlier this year, when I got notice, actually a year ago this month, was the first notice that there likely would be budget cuts, and earlier this year when that was formalized, it caused me a lot of sleepless nights on how to deal with this. Different from an earlier presenter, I am actually very cautious about voting yes on tax issues. This one is different for me, certainly because I know of it, and I know of the consequence that it will cause. The sheriff's office, over the course of the next 15 months, will see an effective reduction of nearly $10 million in budget over the course of the next 15 months, part of that coming in 2020, and part of it coming in 2021. During that same period of time, the district attorney will see a budget reduction of 1.5 million. Those are significant numbers for both of those criminal justice entities because of the consequence that it will have. In the district attorney's office, the only possible way to get there is a reduction in staff. And staff in a district attorney's office is predominantly attorneys. That will lead to different decisions and different processes in terms of what the district attorney would do in terms of prosecuting cases. The role of the district attorney is not to convict everybody who comes in front of them, their role is to seek justice. And that reduction in staff would have an impact on their role of seeking justice. The role more clearly in the sheriff's office, what I am far more familiar with, is going to change substantially in terms of the number of jail beds that will be available. If 1A does not pass at the beginning of the year, I'm going to have to close one floor of the county jail. That'll get me about a third of the way for the reduction that I will see. At the beginning of 2021, I will be forced to close another jail, another floor of the county jail. The net of those, 640 beds, that will only get me two-thirds of the way of where I need to be with the budget reduction that I will have. There will be other impacts in other parts of the sheriff's office. A reduction in jail beds will be achieved in two ways. One, I have a standing chief judge order that permits that when somebody has served up to 50% of their sentence, that they can be let out of jail. When I do that, I will only get halfway where I need to be for 2020. And at the beginning of 2021, I will be required to put orders in place that will restrict who is booked into the county jail. So anybody who is charged with a misdemeanor or a felony class six, five, or four, where a judge is not required to provide an advisement, will not be permitted into the county jail. And that's a horrific circumstance for your Arvada police officer who's on the street, who's trying to solve a problem. Candidly, there are some people who need a timeout. They need a timeout, sometimes for a brief period of time, and some for longer. But certainly, that's the purpose of a county jail, to make sure that our society is safe. And that's what I am predominantly focused on in being in front of you tonight, is that I want to keep Jefferson County safe. I want Arvada to be kept safe. Because when I have to go through both of those measures, you can be assured that people will be going back into the communities in almost the same proportion that they were arrested and placed in jail. So roughly 20% of the people who will be, who will not be in jail, will be back in Arvada communities. And again, I don't take this lightly. This has been the most challenging year of my professional career because of this issue. I don't get there easy, and one of the things that made it a little challenging, and not because I don't have a great working relationship with chiefs of police throughout the county, but when I revealed this to chiefs of police back in April or May, that was one of the most difficult conversations that I had to have. Because they know, just like I do, that this will change public safety policy. It will change quality of life, the quality of life that we know in Jefferson County. So with my strongest urging, I'm asking that you pass this resolution, and that you also support Jeffco ballot issue 1A. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Sheriff. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this topic? If not, I'll turn it over to council for discussion and possible action. I don't see anybody that's got... There we go, Mr. Jones, we'll let you lead off.
Well, I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no other conversation.
Why don't we see what other conversation we've got? Mr. McGough?
Yes, I would like to speak to the issue. I'm assuming the motion will be made to support this resolution. I plan to vote for the motion, because I think the reduction in services that have been described to us this evening from a public safety perspective, and earlier from a general government perspective, are simply unacceptable. From a very specific budget issue, the failure to approve this, or the motion, for the vote to be successful in Jeffco would mean that the county would have to reject state grants in the future because the funding from the state might put the county over the Tabor I think it's also important to vote for this, bring it to the public. The whole notion of ballot issue 1A is consistent with the provisions of Tabor, that we do vote on tax issues. I plan to vote for the amendment for ballot issue 1A when I do fill out my ballot this And finally, because this is not a forever ballot issue, but has funding, or relieves the county from certain restrictions for a period of seven years, I think for all those reasons, it's important that we support this resolution and support the motion that I expect will come before us.
Very good. Mr. Jones, you may make a motion.
Thank you, I'll make the motion and then speak to the motion, if that's okay.
Yes, you may.
I move that R. 19-091, a resolution endorsing Measure 1A permitting Jefferson County to retain and spend or reserve all revenues received during 2020 and expiring after 2026 be approved.
Motion's for approval, you may speak to your motion.
Thank you. And I would just like to thank the sheriff for coming tonight and sharing with us his concerns. Like the sheriff, I have concerns for public safety, and that's been something that's been important to me over the last four years, not as probably as many years as the sheriff, and I appreciate all that serve our public in that manner. But, you know, as I think about our police officers and the work that they do every single day, and the strain that this could put on our police officers, and how they do their job in protecting our citizens with the elimination of beds, and with, you know, the way that bookings would happen in the county jail... the way that bookings would happen in the county jail, one of the things that I think are, is important for me is to ensure that our police officers in the city of Arvada have all the resources necessary to them so that they can do their job. And I believe that with the passing of 1A, again, and, and I, I pause whenever there's a tax increase. But in this instance, because it has a sunset, because it's for a specific period of time, I think that that's the right decision. And so for me, I will be supporting this tonight as I've made the motion. And I also will be supporting it personally. And I would encourage everyone to take a hard look at that. And if, if you have questions, to, to reach out to the sheriff or reach out to the county, board of county commissioners for additional clarification. But I think that this is something that, for the good of the county and for the good of the city, is something that we ought to do.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I also would like to explain my vote. I will be voting no on this resolution and will likely be voting no personally on the measure as well, and I'd like to explain why. So first of all, I think these types of measures are not necessarily the, the business of your Arvada City Government, of the Arvada City Council. They're certainly the business of the Board of County Commissioners. But as a separate division of government, I don't find enough connection here for there to be a reason for us as an organization to be passing a resolution in support of it. So that's the first thing. The second thing, and this gets to be more personally why I may vote no on this, is that there are many good things in measure 1A. I think the, the revenues that come from grants and from fees from services should be exempt from Tabor limits and always should have been. I think it's a very bad anomaly that a county cannot apply for a state grant because they're already up against their Tabor limits. And if measure 1A contained only that, I would be a, certainly would be a yes. Also, the very first year of measure 1A, which fixes the county's budget shortfall, I would likely be in favor of that as well because I believe the county has been dipping into their reserves to maintain their services. And I think they have, that, that cannot go on forever and should have a budget that does that. So I'm okay with that. The problem for me is years two through six, where this is a very large tax increase. Now, it's not a tax rate increase, but the total dollars collected, the dollars paid by our citizens and collected by the county goes up significantly. And I really wish the county had not tried to use this as a way to achieve that very large tax increase. But for me, that's just a hill I cannot get over. So that's why I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Mr. Fiverr?
Thank you. You know, we rely on the county to do a lot and the county has, and the commissioners have done a great job over, I don't know, the last eight years, I would say, to try to keep our community and our county safe, as well as addressing all the other needs like fire, wildlife mitigation, human services, support of our city. You know, many other things than just public safety. I agree that that's one of the most important, but our, our city is like Swiss cheese. It, or it has holes of county all through our community that we rely on the county to fix the roads and to, to service. I believe I see probably a lot of the animal management folks in pockets of our cities who still have farms. And seeing all of that quality of life that we all love and adore be reduced because we're not being thoughtful through this process. I think the county has done its homework and has done a great job focusing on its financials and unfortunately dipping in, and I think it's our turn to support it. I do see a linkage between Arvada and the county because, because of all the pockets of county and our city, plus we're so close to the mountains and doesn't keep us away from fire hazards and other issues that could be impacted by a reduction of budgets. So therefore, I will be personally supporting it. I have a 1A in my yard, a sign, and all my neighbors do as well, and I will be, continue to support it until after election, when it, when it passes. And so therefore, I'll be supporting it tonight as a city council member.
Thank you. I'll speak to the motion as well. I have publicly supported 1A as, as my position as mayor, as have, I believe, all of the mayors here in, in Jefferson County indicated their support for this and, and frankly, serve on, on the, on the committee. I think that both Mr. McGough and I bring a unique perspective to this because of our years of service on the Community Corrections Board. I served on it for ten years and, Mr. McGough, you've served for comparable period of time as, as the city's representative to the Community Corrections Board, where we had very close contact with the issues confronting both the district attorney's office, the jail, and the impacts upon our communities of, of the community correction system. We in, in Arvada are directly impacted with regard to what happens with the county's budget, not just as it pertains to the jail, but also as it pertains to response time for, for mutual aid. Certainly, our road and bridge expenditures are impacted by the funds that are available through the county. And certainly, our court system through the First Judicial District is, is directly impacted. You know, and, and part of this for me is that, you know, our citizens are, in Arvada, voted several years ago to, as we call it, debruise so that we could retain any surplus. I don't see it, I, I think it's a little inconsistent for us now to turn our backs on the county when they are faced with the same kind of dilemma that we were faced with many years ago and have benefited by our great citizens indicating a desire to, yes, we will continue to vote. And that's the, that's the sacred part of, of the Tabor, is that we will always vote on tax increases. Now, while the net revenues coming into the county will certainly increase as a result of this, the tax rates are not increasing. So I think it's, it's an appropriate step for us to take. So with that, I will indeed be supporting this, both individually and will be supporting this resolution tonight. All votes are cast. That passes six to one with Mr. Marriott voting no for the reasons he has stated. And I appreciate Mr. Marriott indicating what his reasons were. I think it's always important that even, either if you're for or against, that to, you sort of make your position as to why, and I think that's valuable and it's, it's a good way for us to be able to interact. Okay, with that, we'll move on to first readings.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-038, an ordinance amending various sections of Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to water user rates and Council Bill 19-039, an ordinance amending section 102-206 of Chapter 102 Utilities of the Arvada City Code pertaining to wastewater user rates. And I move that Council Bill 19-040, an ordinance repealing and reenacting section 74-31, land use fees of Article 2, community development services fees of Chapter 74, planning and development of the Arvada City Code. And I move that Council Bill 19-041, an ordinance amending Chapter 26, Civil Emergency, Emergency or Local Disaster of the Arvada City Code. And I move that Council Bill 19-042, an ordinance certifying the city of Arvada Mill Levy for 2019 for the Board of County Commissioners for Jeffco and Adams County. And I move that Council Bill 19-043, an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2020. And finally, I move that Council Bill 19-044, an ordinance amending Chapter 98, Taxation by amending subsection 98-66, 1E, and section 98-203, repealing section 5.3.3. H2 of the Land Development Code, Article 5, Use Regulations, and adding a new article 5.5 to the Land Development Code, Article 5, Use Regulations of the Arvada City Code to allow for the licensing and taxation of short-term rental of a dwelling, dwelling unit, or accessory dwelling unit, residential. All be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for October 21st, 2019 at 6:15 PM.
Ms. Miller, did you wish to speak to this?
I do, only because the next reading, I'm not going to be here. But I will be supporting all of the ordinances on first reading, but I would strongly encourage my fellow council members when I am out on October 21st to prohibit recreational drugs in short-term rentals.
Mr. Jones, if you'll cast your vote. Thank you. All votes are cast to approve on first reading. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19036, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along West 60th Avenue, generally from Sheridan Boulevard to Wolf Street, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and/or related improvements as part of the improvements for West 60th Avenue, Sheridan Boulevard to Wolf Street, Arvada Project Number 15ST18. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this action is being requested in order to acquire certain property along the north side of West 60th Avenue between Sheridan and Wolf Street to allow for the widening of West 60th Avenue and installation of a six-foot sidewalk that will help convey pedestrian access to the RTD Gold Strike Commuter Rail Station. This is a project that has, is able to occur because of a collaboration between the city of Arvada and Adams County. And they're all, this project is also consistent with our city pedestrian and bicycle access plan that was prepared in 2009 and has been updated since that time. So we're recommending approval and, and I've been told too anecdotally that the residents of West 60th Avenue are actually looking forward to this improvement occurring because with the increased traffic to the Sheridan Gold Strike Station, including RTD buses, this widening will help with, with making that, that route a lot safer. So we recommend approval of the ordinance as described.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion and open up for city council questions or action. Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Council Bill 19-036, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along West 60th Avenue, generally from Sheridan Boulevard to Wolf Street, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and/or related improvements as part of the improvements for West 60th Avenue, Sheridan Boulevard to Wolf Street, Arvada Project Number 15ST18, be approved on final reading, numbered 4707, and ordered published by title only. And I'd like to make a comment. I'm going to be absolutely voting yes on this. I think this is good work by the city team in continuing to chip away at our, both our last mile connections to our transit, as well as our missing sidewalks. And as well, as I'd like to point out, this is in proximity to a school, to the Early College of Arvada, where those children that go to that school will certainly use that. And so good job on bringing this to us and we'll certainly be voting yes.
Motion's for approval. All votes are cast. That passes seven to zero. Thank you. Next, we'll take up three matters together. I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 19037, an ordinance vacating certain tracts of land dedicated as right-of-way on the plat of Candellas Filing Number 2 subdivision, city of Arvada, county of Jefferson, state of Colorado, Candellas Parkway and West 93rd Place. At the same time, we'll consider Candellas Filing Number 2, Paired Homes Preliminary Development Plan, the PDP, generally located north of Candellas Parkway, west of Salvia Street, and east of the West 93rd Place. And finally, as part of this, we'll consider Candellas Filing Number 2, Paired Home Preliminary Plat, PP, generally located north of Candellas Parkway, west of Salvia Street, and east of West 93rd Place. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll have Planning Manager Rob Smetana lead off this presentation.
As mentioned, this is a request for approval of a preliminary development plan and preliminary plat to allow for the development of ninety-eight single-family paired homes on 29.6 acres. A vacation of the two parcels of property are also part of this request. The proposed project is located along, located on a long, narrow parcel of land with significant slopes. The original outlined development plan for Candellas designated this site for approximately three hundred condominiums. Subsequent ODP amendments have reduced the maximum number of units allowed on this parcel to a hundred and fifty. The proposed project, as mentioned, would have ninety-eight units with a density of 3.93 units per acre. The applicant has not requested any modifications from the Candellas Development Standards as part of this project. The Planning Commission heard these requests at their August 20th meeting and recommended approval of the preliminary development plan and preliminary plat on a vote of five to one. The commission also unanimously recommended approval of the vacation. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. Just before the meeting, you also received via email a letter from Andy Miled, who asked that it be entered into the record. And additionally, the applicant is in attendance for presentation and questions, and Senior Planner Carol Labanas is also available for questions, as well as other city staff.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. We have several people who have signed up to speak on this matter. If everyone, including the applicant, who wishes to speak on this matter, if you'll raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony you're going to give in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. The applicant may proceed with their presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Williams. Thank you, council members. We are happy to be here tonight.
Sir, if you'll state your name and, and address for the record.
Sorry, my bad. Paul McMahon, M-C-M-A-H-O-N, address 1425 Brentwood Street, Lakewood, Colorado, 80214.
Thank you.
Again, so thank you for letting us come here tonight to join you, to present our application for Candellas Filing Number 2, Amendment Number 2, otherwise known as Candell's Paired Homes. The applicant for this project is KB Home, Colorado. Representing them tonight is Rick Holt, a project, or a consultant project manager with Site Dynamics, Inc. Rick will usher this project through the approval process and then maintain his presence through the construction period. The design team consists of myself, Paul McMahon with Mw Design, consultant landscape architecture, irrigation design, and they assist with the planning. Leslie Ann Minor and Kevin Roerba with Core Consultants, providing civil engineering, surveying, development planning services to the team, and Mike Rocha with SM Rocha, KB's traffic and transportation consultants. Tonight, we would like to cover the following meeting objectives. First, we will quickly highlight the proposal as they are well-covered in your staff report and in your packets. This will allow us to spend the majority of the time addressing comments we heard at the Planning Commission hearing, and then conclude to make ourselves available to answer any questions you may have. First, to follow up and confirm the location of this site, this site is the approximately 29.6 acres directly north of Candellas Parkway, west of Salvia Street, and east of 93rd Drive. The exhibit shown is the development as it is proposed in the packet. A total of ninety-eight lots equalling forty-nine single-family attached homes at a net density of 3.93 dwelling units per acre, or 3.31 gross if we add back in the public right-of-ways. Approximately forty-two percent of the site remains ziric, naturalized, vegetated, open space, concentrated in buffers between this proposal and the existing homes to the north, and then also in the required arterial roadway setback denoted on the plan by the pink line. Two points of vehicular access have been provided on either side of the site to evenly spread or to assist in evenly spreading the traffic amongst the local roads. Pedestrian connectivity has been provided to Candellas Parkway, allowing access to adjacent parks, the town center, and along with the overall developments, regional trail. And lastly, this proposal is requesting no waivers, variances from city code or the Candellas design criteria. This proposal meets the Candellas Neighborhood Development Standards and Guidelines, matches the architectural designs of the existing community by providing multiple architectural styles, including a prairie, craftsman, and a Colorado mountain rustic. The overall design intent of these, of the architecture is to create homes that appear to be large estate-style homes, providing two independent dwelling units within, rather than two mere- than two mirrored halves of an existing home. Additionally, to match the overall community, the single-family attached homes mimic the adjacent community by providing both front and side-loaded garages on all styles to provide additional interest from the street. And to ensure this variation, a minimum of two out of 10 consecutive lots shall utilize the side-loaded garage. When the side-loaded garage are proposed or required, shared driveways will be utilized to minimize curb cuts into the adjacent, or into the adjacent streets and then maximize availability of on-street guest parking while still leaving adequate room in the setback for resident parking in the driveways. And lastly, each home has a front yard, a private rear yard, and a side yard to provide a very similar feel to a typical single-family development. So now we'll jump into addressing the highlights, or highlighting some of the comments we heard during the Planning Commission hearing. And those are mainly the proposed density, setbacks and buffers, the adjacent building elevations, landscape buffering, drainage, and lastly, traffic. So first, we'll talk a little bit about the proposed density. This proposal is for 98 lots again, which is a reduction from the currently allowed maximum of 150 lots. And even more significant, as staff pointed out, from the original outline development plan, which allowed for 297 condominiums or townhome units. This proposal equates to about a 35% reduction from what's currently allowed, or a 67% reduction from the original ODP. And the applicant took a very conscious effort to attempt to match the existing homes and by not maximizing the lot count. And this is shown as in the resulting net density of the application of 3.93 dwelling units per acre, which is actually slightly less than the existing filing two single-family homes, which are at 4.01. To emphasize that point, we wanted to highlight a few key spots where this proposal directly impacts existing homes. So the first one we have on the slide here is where we are directly across the street from existing homes. And we wanted to point out that from Umpire Way to approximately the end of this application, there are 13 existing homes, and this application is proposing 14. The next area is where we would directly abut or share a property line with the existing homes. In this same situation, from Umpire Way to the approximate end of the lots we're proposing, there are approximately seven homes existing, and we're proposing six. Where we were not able to more closely match the existing homes, a landscape buffer has been provided. Buffer is varying in sizes, but as you can see, it averages between 30 and 40 feet. The smallest whiffs of 10 feet are where we were siding to a rear lot, or a rear yard, or where the property kinks and we have that small pinch point in the middle. That lot is benefited by having a drainage swale and a deeper lot on the existing homes to provide the adequate buffer and setback. Another elevation is, we wanted to provide to be clear, this elevation has been provided to be clear and to actually represent the actual average distances between homes. As you can see, when you add in the rear yard setback and the proposed buffer average, including the existing drainage track and the existing rear yard setbacks, the approximate home-to-home separation will be about 70 to 75 feet. But more importantly, that buffer also helps mitigate, because of the existing slope on this site, the elevation vertically. So this also shows that, on the average, our homes are approximately 21 feet higher. The elevation is only achievable, to get us down to 21 feet, is only achievable by the vacation of the Candelas access point, which we'll cover more in a few slides. As we understand, privacy is a major concern. If the council feels that the buffer is not of adequate size to mitigate the impacts of this development, the applicant is willing to relocate a portion of the required landscape material from the Candelas frontage into the area highlighted in red on this slide as a condition of approval to aid in vegetative screening. We originally did not want to overly vegetate that area as there are drainage concerns also that we'll talk about in a moment, and all of those landscape would require additional supplemental irrigation, so we were trying to limit that fact. So following on to the drainage, following up to the drainage concerns noted at the Planning Commission hearing, this graphic is a simplified watershed-style map. It depicts the pre-development drainage patterns, and as you can see, the areas denoted in blue are the areas that drain towards existing filing number two. The larger area also utilizes the existing drainage swale, which routes water to an inlet behind the existing mailbox kiosk for filing two. This exhibit represents the same area in a post-development condition. So as you can see, the larger area is reduced quite greatly, and the smaller eastern area is almost cut in half, which is a significant reduction in runoff directed towards these existing homes, including approximately 70% of the reduction in runoff volume for the larger area and approximately 50% for the area closer to the east. Another comment received regarding the potential, was the potential for traffic impacts and the additional traffic would cause to the existing community. Mainly, the comments regarded the removal of Candelas Parkway's access and then the additional traffic impacts to 94th Avenue. The initial assumption of the previous approved plans was that there could be up to three points of connection into this site, of which only two are required to meet life safety and emergency response access. Upon the design of this proposal, it was determined that due to the existing topography, a connection tying both Candelas Parkway to West 93rd Place cannot happen without waivers or variances from city code and the traffic design standards. So based on feedback from the community and from the Planning Commission, well, we looked at other options prior to Planning Commission to evaluate if that could occur in a different location. And what we found is that due to the existing grade of both the site, existing Candelas Parkway itself, and its other access points, both locations would require waivers or variances to address excessive roadway grades, intersection approach grades, stacking distance. And it is due to these findings that we feel that this is, the proposed solution is the safest and most viable option for the access and circulation. Along with it being the safest option, it also allows for the proposal to lower the proposed road B and provide as minimal amount of elevation change between proposed homes and existing homes as we can provide. This section shown has Candelas Parkway on the left. The proposed road B is about in the center, and the existing homes are off to the right. Another traffic impact comment noted was the additional traffic volume generated from this development. In the provided traffic report, this development estimates generating approximately 925 trips per day, including 73 peak AM and 97 peak PM trips. The applicant's traffic engineer also worked closely with staff to determine and project possible traffic impacts. The results of that evaluation shows that the proposed, shows that the, at the completion of the Candelas neighborhood build-out, including this proposed development, even with the elimination of the Candelas Parkway connection, the long-term operations of the adjacent intersections will be at a level of Service C or better. And it also found that the roadway classification maximum trips per day are not exceeded without, or are not exceeded by this proposal with the elimination. Lastly, there were a few comments regarding 94th Avenue. The section shown is the proposed, or is the existing 94th Avenue section that was approved with the filing two development plans. And it also matches the city's current minor arterial standard roadway section. This application is not proposing to modify the existing roadway that was approved and installed with the earlier submittals, or the earlier projects. This project, or this section allows for parking on both sides of the street while still providing two 10-foot drivings. And this proposal not asking to modify that in any way. So in conclusion of the traffic comments, just kind of snaps those. The proposal results in no waivers or variances being requested for the city roadway designs and guidelines resulting what we feel is the safest, most viable option. Two points of access have been provided for life safety and emergency response, and also to split the traffic generated amongst the adjacent roadways. The proposal does not impact the existing street classifications or exceed their maximum trips-per-day allowance, and the elimination of the Candelas access point allows for us to lower the site to be closer in grade to the existing homes. So in conclusion, this application provides an additional diverse house, housing option for the overall neighborhood, provides an overall density decrease of 35% from the currently allowed ODP, or 67% from the original ODP, provides 43% of the site as open space or buffering to the adjacent communities. The proposed solution is designed to minimize elevation difference between the proposed and existing homes. The proposed improvements reduce as much as 70% of drainage impacts to the adjacent site. And lastly, the proposal meets all current traffic standards and roadway design guideline, or roadway classifications, without the need for waivers or variances. And with that, we will make ourselves available to answer any questions or answer any staff call.
Very good. Thank you. Is that the end of your presentation?
That is the end.
Okay, very good. I'll open it up now to individuals who have signed up, and then if others wish to speak, they may as well. Rhonda Johanes.
Hi. I'm Rhonda Johanes, J-O-H-A-N-N-E-S. I live in Candelas at 17245 West 94th Avenue in Arvada. I'm here to express my concern about the change of traffic patterns. And with the vacation of the access off of Candelas Parkway, it'll cause our street on 94th Avenue so much more traffic. I don't believe the traffic report that the guy gave, the builder, in that right now our street is so narrow that if a car is parked and you're coming either way, you have to wait for the car to pass in order to go through. I tried to go past a school bus, I mean, a school bus was coming through, it was there. The school bus had to wait, the other car had to wait, I had to wait, and we had to like do a little jig-jog in order for that to happen. No less if a fire engine had to come by. It was our understanding when we moved in that the Candelas roadway would be off of Candelas Parkway, not off of 94th. So the 94 new, or 98 new paired homes is going to cause terrible traffic for us on 94th Avenue. As we listened last time to the builder talk, he said it was, he didn't want to ask the city of Arvada for a variance because it was too steep to build a new road there, as well as it was too steep on Candelas Parkway and it would stop traffic. If it's too steep and it's going to cause that much traffic issue off of Candelas, what's it going to do on 94th Avenue? That's already narrow. It's not a divided road, it's just this little street. I urge you to please stop and reconsider the development that's going to happen along off of 94th Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Angela Campbell.
My name's Angela Campbell. I live in Candelas at 17860 West 94th Drive. I'm here to address some concerns I discussed at the last meeting. Drainage, the congestion that my neighbor discussed, the concern regarding, and I'm sorry, I'm not a builder, but I think the term that they used was average distance step back, setback and adjacent building elevation, as well as the density. I don't know about you, but I think a picture's worth a thousand words, and I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to get a PowerPoint to you a little sooner, so I'm going to try to use this. Is this the, this is the back of my lot, rear of Lot 7, Block 7, which if you refer to, I think, the architect's prior, prior diagram, is on the side, it would be on the west side of this development. And one of the things that I know is our concern, and this does not do this justice, when, you know, when reading this and they discuss the steep, the steepness of the slopes here. We routinely have water runoff issues due to the steep slope. That's from the front of my house on 94th. Unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to get any photos of the street to show you all on an average day, on an average day, not even like, you know, during holidays when there are people who have out-of-town guests and still need to have access to the garage and routinely people park on the street. These are very narrow roads, contrary to the representations that have been made today. And these are folks who commute, these are folks who have four-wheel, all-wheel drives, a lot of trucks, a lot of oversized vehicles that are parking on these streets. Part of the reason that they're parking on the street as opposed to in their driveway or in their garage. And routinely, we have double, we have vehicles on the south side of the street and on the north side of the street, which creates a tremendous amount of problems for us on 94th Drive. Our, my concern about the runoff is I think representations have been made that this is going to help the runoff. And I beg to differ, we had a very cold winter with a lot of winter weather, we're expecting some this Thursday. And this prior photo that I showed the council, we routinely have incredibly icy spots. I walk my dogs, like a lot of the dog lover neighbors I have, and it's dangerous. And my concern is, I don't think that the studies that have been presented to us are sufficient. I'm sure that when William Lyons and numerous other builders in the area presented their very same plans to you, that they believed that these were safe. Somebody's going to be very seriously hurt. I fell last year, fortunately I didn't hurt, but having lived in Denver, I've actually fallen and hurt myself before. I think you're going to see a lot more. And a lot of my neighbors are of mixed ages, and it's really just not safe having children walking on these streets with all of these cars, as well as some of the drainage issues during the winter time. This is looking down Block 7, Block 7. I'm trying to provide you a very, another perspective on how very steep this is and the concerns that I have regarding this development. I have a ranch home. And what that means for me, I tried to tidy my, these are very private for me, but this is a photo into my bathroom. And so, just by way of showing this to you, I have top-down, bottom-up blinds. I feel I should be able to have my window open and reasonably enjoy my home. And what I submit to you is that the elevation that he, that the architect previously showed you is going to be very problematic for me without a higher setback, irrespective of my other concerns regarding stormwater and regarding the increased traffic on West 94th and the only two outlets that they have. It had also been represented to me, as it had been to some of my other neighbors, two integral things. Number one, it was represented to me that this was not a, they didn't know what was going to go back there. It was something at the time of the signing that was, came as a surprise to me that this was pending. It was also represented to me that they couldn't safely build on the steepest area, which is, as you saw from the photos that I showed you, I backed directly to one of the steepest parts of their proposed, KB's proposed development. What you can see here, unfortunately, it was a very bright color in the morning, but this is land back here. This is not sky where I have my finger, and it literally extends, there's a little slit of daylight here. That's where a house would go. That's where a house would be peeking into my That's where a house would be peeking into my bedroom and my bathroom, depriving me of the ability to really access daylight when I'm getting ready to enjoy, I work from home sometimes, sometimes I do work in my bedroom. Not that that's KB's problem, but I think like many of my other neighbors, the concern that I have is their representation that twenty-five feet towering above is not a lot, I submit to you that it is. And I submit to you that we need a larger setback. I saw a lot of very lovely landscaping that appears to be facing Candellas, and I'm sure I can understand why KB does not want to put that very same landscaping up front of the property because people buying those homes rightfully would be like, I don't want anything blocking my view of the beautiful flat irons. Well, of course not, but the problem is, I really don't want people peering into my bedroom when I'm getting ready in the morning, and I think that it's simply unfair to impose on existing residents this particular burden. As you can see, I also can't really use this window in my bathroom because it peers directly into the shower. So, that would deprive me essentially of using natural light in my home. And one of the nice things about living sunny Colorado and one of the nice things about this development with this slogan "Life Wide Open" is that these homes are open designs and I think a lot of people bought there because they do like to have light and they like to look out their windows and they like to have a community. I also submit to you that the setback that was proposed is inconsistent. If you look at their diagrams and then you look at existing homes, this negatively and adversely impacts my property value, for example, because it's inconsistent with other homes in the neighborhood. If you look at my neighbors' houses, sure, there are some homes that have some varying grades. The problem here is, I haven't seen a single home in my subdivision where one home towers twenty-five feet or fifteen feet over the other one, much less the setback that they propose. We're not talking about somebody who has a yard, we're talking about somebody who's either going to have a window facing into my home or they're going to be in their backyard facing into my home. Certainly, that is something that you have in any subdivision, but the problem here is that it's not commensurate to other neighbors. Other neighbors, the homes have been very thoughtfully planned where neighbor, where windows are positioned in a way that we maintain privacy when it's built throughout the same builder. The problem with KB is, they're rightfully going to want to build beautiful, wide-open windows facing the flat irons, which is what they would be facing into my backyard, and that deprives me of the use of my house. And I submit that there should be a larger setback. I share the same concerns regarding vacating the right-of-way and based on some of the representations that were made to us as well as the increased traffic, and I also share the concerns about the drainage. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wills, it's good to see you spell your name right.
That's right. Oh, Mr. Mark, thank you. Thank you to the City Council. I too, I'm, Mark Wills, I live seventeen two oh five West Ninety-Fourth Avenue, so I'm on the road just north of the development here. My biggest issue really, I actually think the, the design of the homes looks pretty good. I think the drainage is actually going to help quite a bit, but I do have a real issue with the vacation of the right-of-way from Candellas. There's been a couple of things noted. One has been the reduction in the density of homes from three hundred to one hundred and fifty, now they're at basically a hundred, which sounds good until you remove that other right-of-way. Now, instead of, I would say probably ninety percent of, you know, let's say three hundred homes heading out to, directly to the Candellas and maybe ten percent heading up Ninety-Fourth, we now have basically a hundred percent of these homes going up Ninety-Fourth, or some will go the other way, but most of the traffic actually is going to go east if you look at the way the, the other exit is out of the west end of that, at least seventy percent if not more. I would say most of the people are going to head out towards Ninety-Fourth Avenue and out. So, I have a real problem with the reduction of the density because it's, it's only reduction if you leave that right-of-way. There's going to be a ton of grading on this site, I suspect there'll be a month or two of trucks and infrastructure, probably, you know, there's going to be a lot of grading, it's going to take a long time. And I know one of the issues is they, they've lowered the site up at this juncture right here with, it's like a fourteen-foot difference now from what it is now, they've lowered that one section. And you're right, you cannot just go perpendicular right off the road to that fourteen feet, that's infeasible. But I spent yesterday afternoon, a couple hours, I overlaid, I did this overlay one just to show, I had to take two of the drawings and kind of put them together to, to kind of get the grades. So, this is just kind of an overall and... So, one, one option, again, I took the difference in grade and just drew general. I know that those radiuses aren't perfect, I know there's probably, still would be required variance for stacking or some other issues. But, what I want to show is that, yes, if you do, do some work and some thought and get some creativity, you can meet the grade, that's at a six percent grade difference. I tried to show the difference in feet down there and then a little summary to get to those roads. So, there probably would be some different retaining walls, there might be a variance on some stacking requirements, and obviously, there's some radiuses there that don't work, but I'm sure a civil engineer can make it work. And so, that's one idea, keeping the access at Candellas without vacating it at all, and then allowing, again, traffic from that neighborhood, direct access to Candellas Street and not have everybody coming through the neighborhood. This next option, again, is just being a little bit more creative, this would be, those grades are actually very close together, that would only be about a one or two percent grade differential between the Candellas and, and the proposed road through there. So, they're actually pretty close together right there as far as the two grade heights. So, I, I know you wouldn't want to redo Candellas as far as creating new grade and new intersection, which you could do, but you'd have to do a lot of work on Candellas. But this, my idea would just be, maybe you have just a westbound traffic off to that, to that road, and then if you're leaving, a westbound traffic out. It wouldn't relieve all the traffic, but it would certainly relieve most of the evening traffic coming in and, and anyone heading out to the mountains. Again, it's trying to get rid of, not get rid of, but instead of having, you know, almost all of this traffic, I would say probably eighty percent of these homes would be coming down Ninety-Fourth Avenue, which, again, as everybody has said, it might be thirty-two feet wide, and I just, I meant to measure that, but I didn't do that this weekend, I forgot. So, it might be thirty-two feet wide, sure doesn't feel thirty-two feet wide. And when you have, do have cars parked on the other side of the street, I know that that meets a parking, you know, a parking lot or driveway width of ten feet or nine feet, I think it was eighteen feet in the middle there between two parked cars from that slide that they showed. But that's pretty narrow and most people are not going to be able to pass each other. Nobody does, like that feels really kind of dangerous, that's almost like parking lot kind of feeling. So, people aren't going to have two-way traffic on that street. It's really going to be, if there's cars parked on either side, it's really going to be one car stopping, waiting for the other cars like they do right now. It's not going to end, it's just going to increase the traffic. So, that's my quick drawing, just gives some idea that I don't think that vacating the intersection up there and the connection to Candellas is a good idea, and I think with a little bit more creativity and a little bit of work, it can still be met with all the grades and maybe a little bit of variance, but nothing major. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to testify on this matter before I go back to the applicant for rebuttal? Okay, we'll move back to the applicant for rebuttal.
So, I will cover a few of the planning and landscape questions and then turn it over to our engineering consultants and our traffic consultants to get more technical on those ones because I know my limitations. So, mainly, the ones I'll cover are talking about density, and, and we were very cognizant while pulling this plan together and kind of massaging it around the space, the site is very narrow and very long and it does have a significant slope to it. But when we were putting the homes in there, we tried our best to make them fit and make them work, and we know that adding homes next to existing homes is always a challenge, and the applicant decided to reduce density to try to alleviate that concern. And, and we hope that ninety-eight lots does alleviate some of those concerns. And as we stated in the presentation, they are also open to adding more landscape to the buffer on the north side adjacent to the filing two homes. We can move however much you would like, if you put a percentage on it, we can, we can accommodate that. We were just also enamored by the drainage concerns, so we didn't want to go too heavy on that. Back to the, another comment about the, the elevation, the elimination of the Candellas access point does allow us to kind of push it back, but I'll let Leslie Ann kind of go into a lot more detail on the grading, but we were trying to get them as low as we could just to try to avoid some of those privacy concerns. And, traffic flow on Ninety-Fourth, I, I actually did, I don't know if it will count for much, but I did measure Ninety-Fourth and it is thirty-two feet and my full-size pickup does fit in that six-foot stall. And I didn't try to, I just pulled it in and thought, maybe I should measure this, and I did, and it, and it was right at six feet. So, it still does allow for the two passing ten-foot lanes. Our concern with eliminating parking there would be is turning those two ten-foot lanes into two thirteen-foot lanes and the transverse of the increase in speed that could occur with that. Those are just food for thought and why we weren't proposing to do that initially. And I will turn it over to, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie Ann Minor with Core Consultants to address some of the engineering comments.
Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Leslie Ann Minor, address is nineteen fifty West Littleton Boulevard, Suite one oh nine in Littleton, Colorado, eight zero one two zero. Just wanted to address some of the grading and drainage concerns that have been brought up tonight specifically related to the Candellas vacation. The neighbor brought up, Mr. Wills brought up some opportunities to potentially meet grades and to potentially meet city standards with a Candellas Parkway access. And we looked at all these, we have analyzed all of these options. Like he mentioned, there is a fourteen-foot elevation difference between the West Ninety-third Place intersection and our Road B to Candellas Parkway, and that provides serious grading problems to connect with a roadway that does not exceed city standards. And so, moving to the west with the roadway was inconceivable. If we meander a roadway through the open space and try to connect a little bit more eastern, we run into, not the grading problem to get down to our Road B, however, we do run into issues with eliminating our walls within that tract which allow our Road B to be lowered, and so this site can be lowered significantly to relate better to our neighbors. We also have to come into the intersection at Road B at a relatively flat grade, and so while we can come in hot at six percent, we do need to flatten out at the intersection, and at the intersection, we would exceed allowable grades. And so, we have looked feasibly at Candellas Parkway accesses at, or opportunities to connect to our Road B at the existing access point. We've also looked at access points further to the east, and unfortunately Candellas Parkway as you move eastward is seven percent, and in order to create an intersection off of Candellas Parkway, we would need to significantly flatten out Candellas Parkway for hundreds of feet in order to come into Candellas Parkway from the north. And that would entail lots of construction on Candellas Parkway and a redesign of already seven percent grades, so those would get even more steep. From a grading standpoint of north to south, we utilized our open space tract there near Candellas Parkway to place walls to, again, bring our site down lower. If you notice, the red dash line on your diagram there, that is a one hundred and fifty-foot building setback from Candellas Parkway. We are not allowed to place any buildings within that dash line towards Candellas Parkway. And so, you see all of our lots, there will be no building that extends southward into that, we are not encroaching that. And so, we utilize the space, that open space there for these walls strategically. No lots there, so we did not have any opportunity to pick up grade there, but we did have these walls that allowed us to drop the grade of the site. And so, we do relate better to our neighbors to the north of us. That's just a little bit on grading. With drainage, I don't know if I can go backwards in slides. I did want to bring up the two slides on pre-development drainage and post-development drainage. Right here again is a simplified map of, of drainage patterns on the site. As the neighbors have mentioned, they do have a serious concern that is validated. They have twenty-five and a half CFS that comes down the hill from south to north to an existing swale that's there and continues onto their property. And that's a lot of water, this is during a major storm event, so a hundred-year storm, but as we saw this last winter, there was a lot of rain, it was very wet, and I'm sure they saw a lot of these conditions during that season. And so, with development, that blue shaded area becomes seventy percent less than existing conditions, and we feel we have addressed the neighbors' needs of needing some kind of mitigation to mitigate the water coming off of this hillside. This is possible because of our road that runs west to east, Road B, through the, that bisects our site. Roadway drainage, or not roadway drainage, apologize, drainage that comes down off of that hillside from Candellas Parkway to the north will now get intercepted by our Road B, get picked up into the storm inlets and conveyed to a regional detention pond that has been sized to handle our proposed development. Along with the lots to the north there, our proposed lots, half of that lot drainage will drain towards the roadway, and so the neighbors will see, again, less development flows coming at them, they will receive half the lots, these are walkout lots, receive the flows from half of those lots that will go into an existing swale which was currently designed for the full runoff of that hillside, and now will receive seventy percent fewer flows and will exceed the desired or will greatly lessen the capacity that that swale needs to have. So, those are the items on drainage and grading. We have greatly taken into consideration the neighbors' concerns and feel like we have met that with this development, and we, we hope that these graphics can explain that well. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else from the applicant?
Good evening, my name is Mike Rocha. I'm with SM Rocha LLC, with Traffic and Transportation Consultants located at eight seven zero three Yates Drive, Suite two ten in Westminster. I'll try to just go through and see if I could briefly address some of the comments and concerns that were presented today, this evening. In regards to Mr. Wills' comments, as far as traffic percentage, we, we do anticipate a, a little bit, little bit less than what was portrayed in the comment, but we do got about sixty-five percent of traffic volume coming from the east-west, so the eastern side of the site and the, and then the difference coming from the west. That's just because of the population and, and all of the other supporting uses that are within Arvada, within that region. So, what we do, and as, as mentioned here earlier about the, the intersection, the street grades, the approach grades, all that, we worked very, very closely with city staff and the traffic department to, to evaluate these options. And so, again, we feel that, that what is being presented this evening is the, the best solution that we could come up with without getting into major design variances from city standard. We do see that- We do see that the the width of the roadway on Ninety-Fourth Avenue, you know, there's no change. The cross-section was approved previously. You do have ten-foot wide travel lanes. And in the industry standard, those are the minimum width of travel lanes that we get into. And that sometimes we do see that if we do start to widen, especially on residential collector streets, we do tend to get higher speeds, less paying attention within that roadway. So then finally with regards to you know, the cause, the statement about causing major traffic impacts on Ninety-Fourth Avenue. So as part of the development application, as you've heard, and we've submitted a traffic impact study for city review. One of the key things to take out of that study is the number of homes and the reduction of homes, which equivalates down to a reduction in traffic. What is being presented this evening is approximately a thirty-four percent reduction in traffic volume, daily traffic volume, if you were looking at a hundred and fifty homes. If you went up to the higher range that was originally approved through the zoning, then we are at about fifty-seven percent reduction. So while we are adding traffic to the adjacent streets compared to some other development applications that considerably could go in, we're providing a reduction in traffic volume generated from this proposal. So with that, I hope that that answers questions.
Very good.
Thank you.
Anything else for the presentation in rebuttal? Very good. We'll close the public comment and testimony portion of this. I'll open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. McGough, you're first.
Yes, thank you. This initial question is for Mr. Rocha, who just spoke to us. You did clarify that the drive lanes are ten feet. And then we have the walk areas on each side and the tree park area to buffer the walking area. So what is the total right-of-way for the, for the street?
Per that exhibit, I believe it was sixty feet.
I'm sorry, what?
Per the slide that was presented, it was sixty feet in width.
Sixty feet?
Yes.
Okay. And so it is the case that the drive lanes are ten feet and the parking lanes are six feet on each side. And sidewalk on one side, six feet, the other side, seven and a half feet. And then the tree lanes. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure I've got that clear in my mind. And I have a question for the a couple of questions perhaps for the lady who spoke with us. I'm sorry, I didn't get down your last name. Leslie? Minor? Okay, thank you. Ms. Minor. A question is, first of all, the the whole, the whole property needs to be reduced, it's going to be the elevation is going to be brought down by about how many feet toward the west side?
On the west side, we have five tiers of walls along that open space tract there. And so approximately fifteen feet is what we were able to lower it from Candellas Parkway.
Okay, and so from Candellas Parkway, it will be relatively at same grade as the Parkway? Or no, it will be lower, won't it?
It will be lower. You're correct.
Lower than the, than Candellas Parkway by?
By about fifteen feet.
So, but there's a large hill, I mean, a big mound of dirt toward the west side, so does that have to come down further than the fifteen feet?
Those will be graded, as you see on the exhibit here, there's some contours on there. We have lots that come up on that western side of the site. Those lots go up into the hillside. They also have tiered walls behind them, and they have some grading that is a four-to-one slope behind them. And so they also trend towards Candellas Parkway in an upward slope. So from Candellas, we will have a continued downward slope into the site.
Okay. Thank you. That helps me get a little clearer picture in mind.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to say a couple of things. So I understand the inability to run a road into Candellas Parkway. And I also agree that narrowing streets slows traffic down. I think we all need to slow down, and I think waiting for a neighbor to drive out is okay. But I also appreciate the concern of the neighbor that owns the home that will be downhill from the houses, looking into her window. I used to live in a house like that. And it's quite shocking when you are waking up and there's somebody in their backyard looking towards your house. Completely shocking. And so I would highly recommend planting a number of trees down there to block all of that view into the homes. And I would also offer up that if water is draining down there, it will water the trees naturally. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pfeiffer, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. So question for staff. So thirty-two feet for Ninety-Fourth Avenue, what is the width of Ninety-Fourth Drive?
There is a drawing on, I was just looking at that. It's still sixty feet flow line, the entire strip for the street. And then flow line to flow line would be still twenty, ten. Ten on each side. So on Sheet four, there is the typical that shows Ninety-Fourth Avenue. And then you've got the park and then the treeline and the sidewalk, fourteen-feet pedestrian area.
That's for, that's for avenue. I'm asking about Ninety-Fourth Drive.
Ninety-Fourth Drive would be the local street, which is also thirty-feet flow line. And that would be ten and ten.
So is Drive narrower than Avenue?
They're basically the same in terms of the length, it's just that they have on-street parking and a fourteen-point-one pedestrian area with a treeline that's eight-foot, one.
So I'm just looking for curb to curb?
It'd be thirty. There's a multiple curb of two. And then the flow would be twenty-eight, yeah.
It's twenty-eight feet, so it is narrower? So what was the purpose, what was the rationale to make Avenue wider than Drive? Or any of the others?
This would be the local street. Road B would be the local street.
And maybe we can explain the difference between the widths of the roads?
So Ninety-Fourth Avenue is considered a minor collector, so it's slightly wider than the other roads, which are local streets.
And you define the collector as. Can you, can you help the public understand what you just said?
So a minor collector is a road basically leading out of a neighborhood that has a little more traffic to it than some of the local streets. So it's designed just a little bit wider than the local street sections in that area. And that was how Ninety-Fourth Avenue was designed when filing two went through as a subdivision.
Is that the case on the other side of, I don't know, where Road B goes onto the western side? Over here on the left side of the screen? Is that road twenty-eight or thirty-two? So if I was to leave this property going westbound, what's the width of those roads?
So West Ninety-Fourth Place is twenty-eight feet flow line to flow line.
Okay.
So it's designed as a local street. West Ninety-Fourth Lane is designed as a minor collector.
Okay. Yeah, okay. And then I guess this will be for the developer, the builder. So you talk about lowering the property, and I know you've made some adjustments. I think if I drove by there, that hill might be gone off the road. Am I correct in remembering that? I'm out there all the time, so I'm pretty sure that hill's gone now. Off the, the part of the road you're trying to vacate, or you were asking us to vacate?
On the part of Ninety-Fourth Avenue?
No, 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 on Candellas Parkway. The hill that Mr. McGough was referring to, I believe you've leveled that, and now you have storage items out on that hill.
The applicant does not, I believe there's, the site is currently being used by, by the current property owner for a staging facility, is what it appears to be. Leslie's here.
So what Mr. McGough was leading to earlier is not necessarily the issue in grading differential that is existing. So to connect Candellas Parkway to West Ninety-Third Place, from intersection to intersection, existing road grades is our issue. Grade, or road elevations. And so whether or not that hill was there, we would still need to make up that differential from roadway to roadway. And so yes, we would have to grade and manipulate our site and cut and fill accordingly.
Not about grading or anything. The question I'm asking was, has the hill been removed? Is that simple?
It has.
So the reason why is that hill was, what, ten feet higher than Candellas?
Yes.
Okay, so what, why did that go from ten feet above Candellas' grade down to, what is it now, fourteen feet below grade? So who decided to take twenty-some feet off of that, that part of the road? Or side of the right-of-way?
I'm going to introduce our landowner, who can give you some more history.
Good evening. My name is Brian Daly. I'm with Arvada Residential Partners. Address is one oh nine one four Remick Ridge Road, Parker, Colorado. Mr. Pfeiffer, the grading operation that you described where the hill was cut down was part of a much larger operation that took place when we developed filing two, where William Lyons eventually built homes in this area. And that's when, you know, most of the cut work that was done was done on that site. I think what the applicant is referring to is how they're trying to manage this site from today's existing grades to what they'd do in the future. This has always been a very difficult site for us. When I first became involved with Candellas back beginning in two thousand and five, from the period of two thousand and five to two thousand and nine, we were doing master planning on this site. And at that time, the Jefferson Center Metropolitan District was moving forward with the actual development work of Candellas Parkway. And we didn't have all of the intersections fully pinned down when they first started this work. If we knew today, if we knew then, we knew today, we'd probably do some of that differently. The slope on Candellas is part of what makes this an extremely difficult site to work with. There are other connections to the north with drainage that also make this difficult. But in our opinion, we think that the product that KB is proposing is an ideal kind of product for this because they not only have a duplex, which is an attached product, which is what our goal was, but they also have a walkout basement-type product with this, which is conducive to some of the slopes that we see here on this site. We've worked with multiple builders, honestly, trying to come up with different products and arrangements to make this work. And in our opinion, this is the best option that we've come up with.
Okay, and so I don't know who wants to answer this next question. Where I'm going, leading to is, what, what other options were there to raise the elevation versus lowering? Maybe it might not fit the young lady's issue of bringing it down to be, but how about if we went higher? What was, was that explored to, to raise the elevation versus lowering the elevation?
I'll let them answer that.
Okay.
Yes, we did. We looked at connections from Candellas, and the issues then go to West Ninety-Fourth Avenue. And currently, Road B is at six percent. And to go any higher and make a flat connection from Candellas and then head eastward, we end up exceeding city standards with roadway slopes.
Pretend roadway B didn't exist. Pretend you had a blank slate.
Sure.
What would it take to raise the entire property, so it's a little bit better for that road to connect?
We would have to eliminate our Ninety-Fourth Avenue and Ninety-Third Place connections. Candellas would have to be our only connection point.
So there's no way for you to level off to where this connection is and then slope down and swoop down into Ninety-Fourth?
I understand your question. It's a good thought, it is, because we looked into it. And it is not feasible with current roadway standards that the city has put in place.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I want to start with Mr. McMahon, I believe. And you had no, you had, in your presentation, had talked about that there'll be some front-loaded garages and some side-loaded garages and even some side-loaded garages side-by, you know, next to each other, so they share a driveway. And you mentioned something about there would be a certain number of those required. Do you know how, how many of those you're planning to do? Are those going to be the predominant feature, or are those going to be kind of the exceptions to the predominant feature?
Overall, I believe it is two out of ten consecutive lots would be required to do the side-loaded garage. And then we would only be proposing them in solutions where they are facing each other, so we can share the driveway. And the question again was, sorry?
Well, I guess the question is, they're required every two out of ten. Is that about, is that about how they'll be built, or will they be more prevalent than that?
They will be at least that as a minimum, as that's required. But if a homeowner, because the way KB Home kind of builds their homes is they allow the homeowner to come in and pick a floor plan, and then they can choose it. So if they choose a side-loaded garage, then the person next to them would also have to choose that side-loaded garage, and then we get to that point.
So it'll depend on how they sell?
It'll depend on how they sell, but at a minimum, we would be required to do two out of every ten consecutive lots.
Have you done developments like this before? Do you know what the uptake of those generally is?
I can ask Mr. Hope. He's working on one currently.
Okay.
Hello, my name's Rick Hope. I'm a contracted project manager for KB Home. My address is one five five four five Carib Circle, Parker, Colorado. I am building this exact same product right now in Castle Rock. And right now, we're about, close to half of the units have the side-loaded garage. And I could see something like that happening here. We do, the minimum is that was specified by staff that we have at least two out of ten, but I could foresee at least half being in that category.
And will that be all of the units that face all of the roads, including the ones down on Ninety-Fourth Avenue? Will have the same option? They will be restricted anywhere? Okay. Then the next question I have is, is in relation to the, the units that I think Ms. Campbell talked about that would be behind her where she lives. Is there anywhere within this development where, you showed three different styles, one of them is a single-story and two of them are two stories? Are there any restrictions on where the two stories can go, or any kind of a plan where there will be predominantly single stories here?
I can't remember, and I'm going to ask Paul. We do, we have a ranch and a ranch side-by-side plan where you have a ranch and ranch, then we have a ranch and a two-story plan, and then we have a two-story, two-story. And
In the preliminary development plan, it is restricted to four consecutive buildings. So that would be eight lots in a row can be two-story with a walkout before a ranch with a walkout would need to be proposed to try to limit the number of two stories we have that could be potentially facing existing homes.
So that's just, just to break up the, you know, the architecture and make it look different. But, but is there anything in looking at this specific development about where the existing homes are and what the neighbors would be looking at that would be advantageous about taking these six lots and saying, or these eight, or these ten, and saying only one of those can be two-story, or only two of them, or something? Any, any kind of further restrictions? Further guidance that you might give the buyers, like, this is only appropriate for one-story ones, so if you want a two-story, you need to pick somewhere else?
Somewhere else. Understandable. The KB, again, back to letting the home, the future homeowner The, KB, again, back to letting the home, the future homeowner purchase and pick their floor plan if it's a two-story or a ranch. Um, they do not pre-plan all these lots with what model and have a, a percentage distribution of how many of each of their models they have. So it is truly up to the home buyer in the future. Yeah, like, it, it's, it is not currently pre-plotted.
Right. Is, is that something, given the concerns you've heard from existing residents, I would assume at the Planning Commission, but also here, that you're, that you're open to or would think about trying to propose something that might be kind of friend, friendly towards them? I, I picture these ones, particularly these lots, where the corners of those lots get very close to the, to the lot lines of the, of the existing homes that are behind them.
I wish I had a laser pointer, but the, the little points there. Um, the one thing that's concerning with restricting to ranches is ranches are, are the, and I'm gonna say the word and I got, we got a lot of comments on it, and Planning Commission is the, is our age-targeted product, because this development is in the age-targeted community for Candela's. So it's supposed to have elements that, that appeal to the fifty-five and over, but it is not age-restricted. If we start to restrict to only ranches, we would only have those two main floor masters and we would think that possibly we would start losing some single family or some young families, some startup buyers. And that, so, but would they be open to it?
Well, and I don't think I was talking about restricting the whole development to that, but just in a key, in some key spots.
Is there a place in particular? I mean, if you look at the site plan, is there some, someplace in particular where?
Well, yeah, so I look at where you-
You'd want us to consider that?
Where along Road B, where you've got that drainage, uh, swale that goes towards the north or that open space between the blocks that goes towards the north. You know, the, the backs of those lots, those corners of those lots get very, very close to the, to the existing lot lines of the, of the homes behind them.
So you're talking about the, the pinch point?
Yes, the pinch point.
Uh, and nobody has a pointer? Is there a pointer?
I can point.
Yeah, right there? So you're just talking about limit, limiting those two fourplexes?
Yeah.
I, I think we could-
Limiting the, yeah, correct, limiting those to-
I, I think we could consider that.
To, to some, to something like that.
Those two, those two fourplexes?
Yeah. And I, and I guess my question to the, to the, um, folks who made public comment tonight is, is, is that something you see as a positive or is, or is that not a positive to you as well? Um, whether, whether that, whether you think that would improve your situation or not? So let you think about that for a minute and, um, we'll come, come back to that. Let me ask you just, um, uh, two more quick questions about the traffic. And so probably Mr. Roca would be the one to answer these, these questions. So you guys did the traffic analysis here and when I went out and visited the site, I had the same, uh, the same kind of series of questions that I've heard here tonight about, it, it sure is a shame that the grades don't work out to where this has some access to Candela's Parkway so people could come and go from that, from that way. But my question would be, on Ninety-Fourth Avenue going east from Umer Way, do you have any idea what, how much of a percentage increase in traffic this development will, will impose on Ninety-Fourth Avenue going east from Umer Way?
I do. Um, let's see if I have that here in my notes real quick. If I can't find it real quick, I can definitely get that number for you.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll let you maybe, maybe get it and after everybody else asks their questions, you might come back to me with that. And then the other question I would have on a similar vein is, um, do you know approximately which, how much percentage of this traffic would come and go from the east on Ninety-Fourth Avenue versus on the west on Ninety-Third Place? Have you just, have you modeled how that would break down, kind of where the, by what percentages the traffic might flow?
I do have that number.
Okay.
So generally speaking, um, if we've got about, uh, so you're looking about two-thirds of the nine, nine hundred and twenty-five vehicles per day. Uh, that would be, so roughly around six hundred per day that would be directed towards Ninety-Fourth Avenue, um, Salvia, and then out the sixty-five percent going east.
Okay, so about six hundred, three hundred would go, two-thirds, one-third. Okay. That's, I think that's, uh, I believe that's all my questions. Mr. Mayor, would we have any interest in asking the folks who made public comment today whether they-
Yes.
Would like to weigh in on, if there's anything about those lots at that pinch point, having any additional restrictions on what style could be built there, whether they thought that might be-
Sure, and I think that would be Ms. Campbell, right? Yeah, if you'd like to address that issue. Yes, if you'll come back down.
So if I understand what he was saying, the pinch point would be where that gap is?
Correct.
All the way to where the proposed, um, entrance would be off of Ninety-Fourth Drive to the west?
I, I think what I was talking about is just where the, where the, the, the two lots or the, the, the buildings on either side of that gap, where the corners of those lots get very, very close, you know, from this perspective, nearly touching the existing.
Well, that doesn't help me because I'm actually on the left side. Um, could, did somebody have a pointer?
Okay.
That doesn't help me because I'm over there.
Yeah.
One, two, three, four. Well, sorry, one and then go moving to the right.
Yeah, I, I understand where you are. So I guess let me ask it for not, not just about your exact situation, not doing something for, for you. But your neighborhood, in, in, living in that neighborhood and looking out on this hillside, is there anything about restricting the, the, the type of product they could build on a couple of lots that's any improvement of a situation for, for your neighbors or neighborhood versus allowing the buyers of these units to, to choose anything that they like?
I, I can't speak for them, but what I, yes, in short. However, um, I think it's limited because where you see those, the lots becoming denser to the east after the pinch point and really those four units there, um, to the, directly to the left of the pinch point, that is a much flatter area. And so though I think it could be very useful to them, I, I think that the concern that I have is that really moving from the pinch point, as he's calling it, to the west or to the left of this diagram, it's, it's still problematic for all of us. I mean, I'm, I'm not just speaking for myself. I mean, certainly I know that other people have the same concerns I have, but the problem is that these, um, units are going to be towering over existing two-story houses and they are going to be towering over my house, which is a ranch home. And incidentally, I'm not an elderly person and I live in a ranch. I'm sorry, I don't mean to offend anybody who's a senior. So I guess I, I would say, yes, it could, but the problem is that the proposed area where I think, if I'm understanding what you're saying, and I, I do appreciate the, I do appreciate that, but the only problem is that's still a flatter area. And so in that particular location, I, I don't know how, um, how much a difference it would make to them.
Okay. That, that's good. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Right. I don't have any more questions.
Very good. We'll go to Mr. Jones and then we'll get that traffic question answered in terms of the percentage increase that this development brings to Ninety-Fourth. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. A lot of my questions have been answered, but I've got a couple of other, uh, follow-ups specific to drainage. If we could go to the drainage before and after, actually go to the before. Yeah. So I'm assuming that the green, and I guess, I don't know if this is for staff or who's best to answer this, but the, the green dotted line closest to the, to the residence there on Ninety-Fourth Drive. And it takes it around the corner there into, into something. But is that, I mean, is that where the, the flow is intended to go, out into that kind of open space there?
That's an existing drainage swale that was built with filing two.
Okay.
So that's existing that was put in with the existing development that catches the water off of that hillside and carries it out into their development.
And the thought is that that, because I thought I heard that that existing swell was going to be retained for this use as well?
That existing swale will remain in place. Um, it will just see a smaller flow going to it.
Okay. So, and I know that, you know, this, I'm gonna speak for a second about a different neighborhood where this has been an issue, where those existing swells or those flow areas, um, aren't working as they should. And so the water is running through the existing properties with no outlet to the curb. Um, and so it's puddling at the front, yep, at the front lot. That's my concern with this here, even looking at the, the post-drain or the post-build drainage, if you can go to that slide. I, I think we have the same, the same issue, even though, you know, it's been reduced, the seventy percent of the runoff's been reduced with the development. Um, I, I still think the soils, um, aren't conducive to water. And so they're not, you know, it, it's just, uh, they're holding water way too much and we're not evacuating that water. There's not places for that water to evacuate in other places. And so that's my big concern is that, you know, we've got this proposed swell that, you know, is or might do the job, but what if, what if it's not doing the job? Then whose responsibility is it to make sure that that water evacuates to the roadway and to the gutter?
There's currently an existing inlet, um, at the end of that swale close to the roadway.
Yep.
And so when flows do get there, they're input into the drainage system. So that does mitigate, um, some of your concerns there, which is a very real concern about puddling whenever that swale ends. And so the developer to the north took that into consideration with an existing inlet there. So that does help. Um, we will ensure that there is adequate slope on that swale to get flows to that design point.
And so when it gets to the end point, so there's that, there's a big grate there towards the end before you turn, let me see if I can see it on here. So as it kind of comes out onto the cul-de-sac into that area, there's a, right there at the point, the tip of the cul-de-sac, that's the grate you're talking about where?
Yes, so you're referring to drainage off of the eastern lots?
Ye-yes.
Just south of the cul-de-sac there?
Yep.
Correct, so there is a proposed drainage swale that you can see the arrows pointing towards and towards the end of that cul-de-sac, there is an inlet there that will pick up those flows from that swale.
Yeah, so I saw that one when I was out there, but I didn't walk far enough in to where the green dots are, just to the, to the west, of which we were just talking about, the existing area that has an inlet. Is there a similar style drainage spot there, big grate?
Yes, type C inlet, um, just big three-by-three square inlet.
Okay. Um, so again, you know, to my point of, you know, what if, you know, because I think that, you know, there's always conversations around, well, we've got it handled and it's gonna work perfectly and then it doesn't. Um, and so what if it doesn't work perfectly? Whose responsibility is it to ensure that that water evacuates the way that you say it's going to evacuate?
Sure. Currently, that swale is designed for a hundred-year storm event. So that's the maximum storm event that we design to. And so there's freeboard even above that, meaning that there's the hundred-year level and there's extra room in the swale to account for a factor of safety. Beyond that point, any emergency runoff would flow through these developments. They are considered A lots and so they drain from the back of the lot down to the roadway. And so water would be carried through lot swales out to the roadway. That's what would happen in an emergency situation.
Okay. Thank you. So if you could go to, uh, the slide that we were just looking at with the pinch points, actually go to the one that shows the, the, the distance, the setback distance that where it's like thirty feet, ten feet? Oh, actually, yeah, right there. So Ms. Campbell, are you, you're on this side, lot, or block seven? Are you, are you on the far west side? By the forty-five?
Yes, come back down to the microphone if you want.
I think I'm at lot seven, block seven. And that's what it looks like from that house looking up the hill.
Okay, so unfortunately, there's nothing behind you, I don't know where that is.
I know, there's no frame of reference to see how high it is, which is why I tried to take the photos from inside.
Right. So, so thank you. If we could go back to the, to the PowerPoint. So is your, is your house closer to the forty-five foot setback? Um, because if I count seven in from, from, uh, Ninety-Third Place and Ninety-Fourth Drive, you're right around the forty-five. If I'm, if I've got you on the other side, you're gonna be seven houses in, you're gonna be kind of at the end of the cul-de-sac of Road A. But I, so I'm just trying to figure out what side you're on.
He's showing me, um, if we could just, maybe a camera. The key is marked, my lot right there.
Okay, perfect.
And my house extends out a little bit further because it is a ranch, so in order to have the square footage, um, it's a little bit closer to the property line.
Okay, no, that's fine. So thank you, I just wanted to, now we can go back to this drawing. So, um, and this is probably a question, um, from Mr. McMahon. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
McMahon. So the, are there retaining walls, um, back there? You know, because you've said there's a, between twenty and a twenty-five foot differential or height. So what do those retaining walls look like? I'm assuming there's retaining walls, or is it just a, a grade up?
No, there are retaining walls. You can sort of see them on the, on the graphic where the green disappears into more of a darker color, um, concentrated between the second, if we're counting from the left, the first four-pack, and then we go into the second four-pack and third four-pack of lots. Those two have stacked series of four-foot segmented block retaining walls behind them to help make up the great difference.
And so when, um, so those lot, how big are those lots? Nine, the, are, how many square feet are those lots? Are they five thousand square feet, six thou, or I guess it's a double, so?
The, are the proposed lots?
Yeah, your proposed lots.
Oh, you're, that's, that's a tough one off the top of my head. Um, I believe they are forty-three by a hundred and ten? Forty-three by a hundred and ten, so quick math in my head is about forty-three to forty-five hundred square feet. But it is on the plan if I could run back there and grab it.
Yeah, and it's probably in my documents too, so I'm sorry, I put you on the spot. It's easier for me to do that than to look, but, um, so, uh, how, how far will the units be to the back of the property? So how much backyard will there be?
Our rear yard setback is set at twelve feet.
Twelve feet?
So they would not be able to encroach any deeper into that than twelve feet. Currently, the floor plans give a little extra room, but twelve feet is, is where we set the maximum.
So going to your offer earlier about additional, um, landscape, uh, barrier, what could you do in that area that would cover twelve, fifteen, twenty feet of-
Vertical height.
Vertical height?
Um, we could look at an evergreen tree screen, but then we would be blocking the sun from everybody below us. But that would be the, the easiest way to get up that, that vertical difference, um, because we're looking for twenty feet of height is approx, and it would take some years for them to grow in, but we could go with evergreen trees. In between the walls is a, is an issue because we can't fit evergreen trees in between those walls because it would affect the walls and push on them. But all the private backyards would have space, but we can't landscape in those, but the homeowners could if they would like to. But we could do large shrubs in the walls, four to six footers, but to get all the way up to that full maximum height differentiation, it's a-
Yeah, I just don't see how that, how it's feasible.
But because we are slightly higher, we, we could block lower because the down angle and then their up angle would, which, because of the perspective, it could, could work with six to, four to six-foot shrubs.
Okay, so now I'm gonna ask a question that Mr. Pfeiffer asked and I'm, I'm gonna try and ask it differently, not that it's gonna be any better. But let's pretend that you could bring that side up. Okay, I get the traffic issue, um, or the road issue, but let's pretend you could bring that side up- But let's pretend you could bring that side up ten feet, kind of in the center, bring it up ten feet, and then it gradually slopes to the, to the exits of, of Road B to give at least a little bit more height. So to the neighbors, it doesn't appear as though I've got peering neighbors, peering backyards into my backyard windows. I know that there was a question or a problem with city standards, and so maybe this is where I look to staff on those city standards. What would preclude the developer from doing that specifically? Why would you tell them no?
That would require taller retaining walls, so even a greater series of retaining walls, which they're already pretty tight in a portion of that area, or allowing those retaining walls to be taller than the four-foot maximum that we have.
Are there areas in Candela's where we've allowed higher maximum height for retaining walls?
We have, but it's primarily on the open space, like on the edges of the development, and not necessarily for retaining walls for backyards.
What's the concern?
Again, they are tall. The height is really high. And so that would be a major block on that area within the development. So we don't necessarily like it between developments.
Is there another way to, to address the same issue a different way? And I'm playing planner right now, so, you know, I don't, I don't understand this as well as you do.
I don't, I don't believe so with the existing homes there. There's just, you know, if, if the, if the homes to the north weren't built yet, you could kind of start to raise things up. But that's at a set level. Candela's is at a set level. There's really not a lot of room to play with, with changing heights.
Okay. I think all of my other questions have been asked and answered by my colleagues, so I'll, I'll hit the pause button for now on that.
Very good. Did we get an answer on the issue of the percentage increase of traffic?
Quick answer is forty-seven percent. So that's how much traffic this development proposal will be adding to Ninety-fourth Avenue in a, in a, the, the build-out timeframe of twenty years. And that, that is, that, that number does not include kind of what, that standalone to this site, forty-seven percent of traffic volume of the, of the long-term totally, twenty-year traffic volume that we anticipate on Ninety-fourth Avenue, which includes all of the unbuilt homes within earlier filings of Candela's. This particular site is forty percent, forty-seven, approximately forty-seven percent of that total volume.
Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Sure.
So I, so let me make sure I understand you correctly. So it's forty-seven percent increase of traffic for this development of today's current traffic count or twenty-year traffic count?
Of the twenty-year count, which includes the remaining of build-out of earlier filings of.
Filing two.
Yep. So homes, homes not built yet.
And do we know what the count of the other homes are? Because there, I'm just trying to figure that fifty percent of the traffic is gonna come out of this ninety-eight percent. There's Ninety-fourth Drive, Ninety-fourth Lane, and, you know.
Yeah, so.
Do you know what the count is? It just, it seems like a lot of traffic for just ninety-eight paired homes.
So what, what we did was, hopefully I can answer this because we do have a lot of percentages based on different scenarios. But what we tried to do is we looked at, before we added traffic volume to Ninety-fourth Avenue, we looked at where it was today and where it would be in the, in the tomorrow, in two timeframes, short term and long term. And so we just designed for the long-term side of things. So then what we did is we looked at filing two, we looked at all the, as of today, and then all of the remaining unbuilt homes. We anticipated the traffic volume from those homes. We got a fairly decent split of, of traffic, so not all of those unbuilt homes are gonna be coming down Ninety-fourth Avenue. Some will be split, but anyway. So we, we tried to come up with a reasonable split on that traffic, and we add that volume to Ninety-fourth Avenue, and then we add our volume on top of that. So.
Okay. So you think some of that volume, if you drew a line, there's a, there's a street there in the middle of Ninety-fourth Drive, most of those folks in the west will head towards the other Candela's Parkway's.
I mean, it's, it's roughly about the same percentage that we're looking at on our site, where about sixty percent will be coming, going, coming from the, the east, and about forty percent from the, from the west. So, so what we end up with is then if we do some quick math here. So without the development, twenty years out, we're looking at a volume, anticipated daily traffic volume on Ninety-fourth Avenue of about twelve hundred vehicles a day. Then we're going to add on top of that our two-thirds of the volume, which is at about six hundred vehicles a day, to get us to a, a total, total traffic volume projected for twenty years on Ninety-fourth Avenue at eighteen. So, so that's how we come up with, and then of that, so of, you know, so that, that difference from twelve to eighteen is six, and that's the forty-seven percent.
Eighteen hundred cars a day?
Okay, please.
So what we, what we also though, as, as the Ninety-fourth Avenue as its section and its design and classification as, as, as it is, the threshold for, the daily design threshold is about three thousand vehicles a day, based on the cross-section that's, that's been planned for. So, you know, eighteen, so we're, we're roughly, at, when everything's said and done, we're about, you know, a little bit over half of the total capacity envisioned for that roadway section on classification of Ninety-fourth Avenue.
I, you know, it's, it's, I don't, I, I'm struggling with your number. I mean, we're talking about only a couple hundred homes, and you're saying that each home is doing eighteen trips a day. I get we all buy from Amazon, but I don't know if it's that many that show up a day.
No, and, and I am, I'm trying to just be brief and round up the numbers, but where, what our multiplier is per home, it's nine point four.
Per day?
Per trips, per home.
Is there a difference between weekdays and weekends?
Not really.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
You guys, no, I don't have a question for you.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
You can sit down. So quick question for staff on the setback off of Candela's Parkway, where the pink line, in this picture where the pink line is, I think there's a better picture that maybe shows it, the full setback there. My question, wait till you get to the picture. Yeah, that'll work. So my question is, did we discourage the applicant from requesting a change to the outline development plan, or to this plan here to, to request a set, a change in setback?
No. The requirement is if you're having a single-family residential, actually basically residential, adjacent to an arterial street, the setback is a hundred and fifty feet from the center line. That's across the board with our land development code. I think the biggest challenge for them in terms of looking at all the design options to access out of Candela's Parkway was the issue. And the grate there and the stacking and how they would have to redo Candela's Parkway to meet the grade. So they did inquire about that, but just the level of changes that would have to happen in order to meet, because they basically have to meet the height of Candela's Parkway when they're coming up there, as well as stacking and things like that. They've looked at, they looked at those options, and then at that point, it was not really something that the city really, didn't discourage them, but it also was a major task to try to meet that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
I see no other questions. Is anyone prepared to make a motion? Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll start with the first one. Move that Council Bill nineteen dash zero three seven, an ordinance vacating certain tracts of land dedicated as right-of-way on the plat of Candela's filing number two subdivision, City of Arvada, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado, Candela's Parkway and Ninety-third Place be approved on final reading numbered forty-seven oh eight and ordered published by title only.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I'd like, Mayor, I'd like to speak to the motion. I will tell you, originally I thought we should be more creative and hold that opening and try to make that connection happen. I, I do believe there's a traffic issue in this area. But it's not uncommon for this area to have limited access to Candela's. If you look across all of Candela's Parkway and you look at the density of homes and their access to Candela's Parkway, you know, it seems like this area has less homes than other areas where that's connected to Candela's Parkway. I also think that, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I think your numbers are way too high. I cannot see a couple hundred homes generating eighteen hundred trips a day in a neighborhood. It just seems crazy, that, crazy high. I, I do appreciate the fact that there was some discussion prior about the access with the staff, and I do appreciate that there was some opportunity to look at it. But I will tell you, I was not very fond of this, of this motion at first. Good thing Mr. Daley stood up and talked for a quick minute, because it kind of explained how the grades changed because of filing two, and some of us need that history, or at least be reminded. I might have been here when he did it, but I don't remember everything from eight years or twelve years or fifty years ago. So I wasn't born then. So I will be supporting the, the motion.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a, this is a challenging question at best. And, you know, I, I've gone, as I've looked at this, I've gone back and forth as to whether or not the vacation of the right-of-way on Candela's was the, the appropriate thing to do. And as I kind of gone through tonight and listened to, to the applicant and listened to those who, who lived in that area, I'm of the opinion that we shouldn't vacate that access and that we should try and find a way to, to put in these ninety-eight homes or some number less than that using Candela's Parkway as a way for these residents to come out of the neighborhood. I, I think the, the part for me on the, the traffic numbers, I, whether they're right or wrong, they're high. And so I think we've got to get that right before we can make a decision on vacating this piece of road. So I will not be supporting the vacation of that spot.
Okay, all votes are cast. That passes five to two with Ms. Ford and Mr. Jones voting no.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that Candela's filing number two, paired homes preliminary development plan, PDP, generally located north of Candela's Parkway, west of Salvia Street, and east of Ninety-third Place be approved, subject to the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. And I'd like to speak to this motion, so I'm gonna be voting yes on this. I think this is a, a difficult site, but also a site for really nice development, and I think it will be done, done really, really well. I too wish there was a way that this development had some access to Candela's Parkway. But in my look at it, and from the testimony I've heard here tonight, I just don't see how it's possible to do. And the, the, while there are concerns about the traffic on Ninety-fourth Avenue and where the, where this is gonna go and the impacts that this will have to the existing neighborhoods, I don't think they're out of line. In fact, I think it's very much along the lines of what has been planned for here all along. So for those reasons, I will be voting yes.
Thank you. Mr. McGough?
Thank you. Yes, I'll be supporting the motion. First of all, because it, it does increase our housing stock, the diversity of the, of the housing stock, particularly of what is needed in this part of our city. Secondly, that there are no modifications that have been requested, so there's full compliance with all the criteria for the, for the preliminary development plan that we're considering under this motion, as well as for the preliminary plat, which I assume will be with the following motion. So for those reasons, I'll be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to make an amendment to the motion to move some landscaping from the south side of this site to the north side, enhancing the landscape buffer between this site and the existing homes to the north.
So Marriott, do you want to?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would be happy to accept that as a friendly amendment to the motion.
And it's my understanding from the applicant that that's an acceptable proposal? I see nods of heads from the applicant that they would accept that as a, so the motion is amended to include the shifting of landscaping from the south to the north. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I too wish we could find a way to connect Candela's, but understanding the difficulties that this property has brought for, for the area, I do believe that it is an interesting product that has to be, to diversify our, our housing stock, as well as, I appreciate the fact that a developer's come to us with, with meeting all the criteria, with not asking for exceptions. It, I can't even recall the last time that actually happened. So, you know, I don't think it ever has since I've been here. So, you know, to meet the criteria a hundred percent like that, I have to applaud the developer in doing that, and therefore, thank you for meeting our criteria and meeting our requirements. And thank you for the amendment, Ms. Miller. So I will be supporting the motion as well.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I, this is, I mean, I, it's a good product. I mean, it's, it's, it's what, it's the kind of thing that, you know, needs to go there. And I, I, I can appreciate the concerns of, of the neighbors with regards to, you know, peering neighbors or however you want to refer, you know, yards or areas that would peer down into their yards. And so I'm, I'm really conflicted because it's a, you know, it's an appropriate space. It's hard to build. I wish, as I said in the prior motion, that there was a different way to do it. But I, I just, again, I, I, I think that in order to do this the right way, we need to have access to Candela's Parkway. And I would, you know, I wish that that was a possibility, so therefore I can't support this project.
All votes are cast. That passes six to one with Mr. Jones voting no. One last motion on this.
Finally, move that Candela's filing number two, paired homes preliminary plat, PP, generally located north of Candela's Parkway, west of Salvia Street, and east of West Ninety-third Place be approved, subject to the conditions of approval identified in the staff report. And I just want to make a quick comment to this. Appreciate during the public hearing, being able to quiz the applicant about putting some restrictions on these lots in this plat to only certain types of homes. It appears that, that there's really no value in that, so I'm not including that as part of this motion. But I appreciate their willingness to, to be open to that, so thank you.
Motion for approval. All votes are cast. That passes six to one, Mr. Jones voting no. Why don't we take a brief stand in place, and then we'll move on to our last public hearing? Why don't we take a brief stand in place, and then we'll move on to our last public hearing? Okay, we'll reconvene, and we'll move on to our public, our last public hearing. It's the Wild Grass Commercial filing two preliminary development plan, approximately located at one four seven six nine West Eighty-seventh Parkway, east of Indiana Street, north of West Eighty-seventh Parkway. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Planning Manager Rob Sumitana will again introduce this item.
Mayor and council, this, as you mentioned, this is a request for preliminary development plan approval to allow for the development of four new retail buildings consisting of approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet of space on a three-point-nine acre site, which is located east of Indiana and north of Eighty-seventh Parkway. In this instance, the applicant is requesting three modifications from development standards to allow for open space to be calculated cumulatively rather than lot by lot, to waive the requirement for landscape islands in the parking, in parking rows, and to provide a single trash enclosure rather than several trash enclosures. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this plan at their September third meeting. We have received the signed posting log and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is here for a presentation. Senior Planner Carol Labanis is also here again, as well as other staff members for any questions.
Very good. And was there a posting log and mailing affidavit? Okay, I will accept both of those, make them part of the record. Any member of the public like to testify on this to the applicant and others? If you'll raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony given these proceedings to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. The applicant wants to make a presentation? Good evening.
Hello, my name is John Hauser with Drake Real Estate Services. I'm the owner of the property and the proposed developer. Address four ninety-six South Broadway, Denver, Colorado. I'll be brief tonight. I think we have a little PowerPoint. Carol, is that right? If you want to just flip through it. You can just skip the narrative. Let's just go, it's been a long night for everybody, so I'm sure you want to get out of here. But, and what I want to do is just tell you very quickly what our strategy is for the project, and then really just open it up to discussion and your questions, rather than kind of regurgitate all the, all the different highlights of the development, if that's okay, if that's how you want to see it. Is there a site plan, Carol, that, and go to the building divisions? So, on Indiana, there's an existing Starbucks and Seven-Eleven. This is the four acres directly to the east of that. We've been working on this project with, with staff and the neighbors and the planners for about six, seven months now. So we feel like we're, you know, really down, far down the, the road. And we're replating it to four lots, we're having four different buildings. I can talk to you about the, the tenants and the, and the uses. But it's really kind of a harmonious development, as a cohesive shopping center would, would be, which is why the three variances we're asking for. The landscaping, you know, it's all one shopping center. So if you re, if you look at the lots individually, maybe they don't meet code, but if you collectively, we did, we did a lot of work on enhancement of the landscaping. Same with the trash enclosures. It's, it's, it seems silly to have a trash enclosure for each of the four buildings. We potentially could have four different trash companies coming every morning, picking up trash. So we made it as part of the shopping center, and they're all clustered together. And the third one is the, is the, is the parking rows. There's supposed to be, I think, every ten stalls, an interruption of, of parking with some type of landscape element, and we had asked for that to be a little bit longer. And in exchange for that, we upgraded the landscaping around the perimeter of the buildings. We have trees and grates and benches. And if you really look at the development, there's a sidewalk that wraps all the way around. It's very, very pedestrian-friendly, very walkable. That is all by design and, and thoughtfulness of the tenants and, and the city and Drake in, in making something that's going to be a real attractive place to, to visit, we believe. The architecture is consistent with the architecture of the Starbucks and the Seven-Eleven. There was a recorded document that really kind of set guidelines. I feel like we upgraded from that. There's a lot of different roof articulation and some, some bump outs, some pilasters. We, we added some interesting awnings in storefront. We brought in a couple new materials. But it still stays within the theme of the Starbucks and the Seven-Eleven. So it's not going to look out of place. It's going to look, it's, it's going to look like it belongs, but maybe a little bit better. That might be my pride, but, but that's how the buildings look. And I guess I'll just open it up to conversation and questions, if you'd, if you'd like to do that.
We'll finish with public testimony. We have one individual signed up, Peggy Wagner. Good evening.
So, good evening. My name is Peggy Wagner, W A G N E R. I live at one four four five seven West Eighty-eighth Place, Unit C. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've been involved with this proposed development on this lot for about three years now. Last year, I strictly opposed, strongly opposed this storage facility. However, this year, I, I support this proposed development. I believe the City Council and Planning Commission both listened to our concerns last year, and I also believe that they listened to what we suggested we might like to see in a proposed development. And I think they've tried to meet those concerns and desires. So I'd like to thank you for that. I'd also like to thank Drake Real Estate for working with us and communicating with the neighbors and the method that they have. We really appreciate that. So, with that said, I have to ask City Council to consider a couple of items concerning this proposal. First, Building C Lot Six, which is the long building on the eastern border between the townhomes and the rest of the development. It's only thirty-seven feet from the property line, and I think it's fifty feet, and they can correct me, I think fifty feet from patio to commercial building. So because of that proximity, I just want to request that we ensure the most buffer that we have between that commercial development and, and our homes. Also, Drake has offered to build a six-foot privacy fence, which we really appreciate. I guess I have a couple questions. At what stage of construction is that going to be constructed? Is it going to be early stages, so it kind of buffers it from construction, or, or when will that be built? And then the posts, are they going to be masonry, sturdy posts, are they going to be wood posts? I just want to be sure, whatever is put there, the privacy fence, it can withstand those extremely strong winds that we get through that area? I also, I, I believe that they have confirmed this, but I just want to be sure that we have minimal lighting and no signage on the east sides of those buildings. I think there's three eastern sides that we would be concerned about. Also, the parking lot lights, I'm not sure how tall those would be. I'm hoping they're shorter than the buildings. We really don't want to see those from our homes if we can avoid that, staring right at those. Also, during construction, if we can have strong mitigation in place for the dirt and the debris that through December, January, November, those winds are going to blow and bring that across that, that field, if we can have that mitigation in place, and make sure the portable toilets are as far from our homes as they can be. So, with that said, I believe the plans show also a modification on this eastern swale. I wasn't really clear, I couldn't tell from the plans, what that modification of that swale is. I know they've already started a modification on the east-west swale, but that north-south, I just want to understand better what that modification is. So, if you would please consider those requests and help to lessen the impact on the neighborhood community and support our current quality of life for our Whisper Creek community, we would really appreciate it. Thank you for the time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call upon the applicant to respond to those issues. And anything else you'd like to say in rebuttal or?
Sure. You know, we've worked, I feel like, pretty, we've, we're a good relationship with the neighbors. We've worked well with them. We certainly have designed that building where there's no driveline behind it. There's no loading, there's no drive-throughs. There's absolutely no lighting and no signage, and so we were respectful of their wishes there. We did volunteer a six-foot-high privacy fence, the length of the property. That's not only to shield visible, looking in the back of someone's building, but also there's a lot of people, I guess, that walk through the neighborhood to Starbucks. They cut across the lot, and they, they walk through their yards. So I think we're, we're, we've really mitigated that. We've got the building as low as it can be in terms of height. We reduced the size of it there, but it has to be a certain height to cover the HVAC units and all the roof, rest. I really feel like we've addressed a lot of their concerns. The photometric study and the lighting, you know, that's zero-foot candles at the front, at the, at the property lines, we, we comply with all of the, all of the, you know, technical, legal aspects of that. And the, there will be masonry columns on the, the wood fence, and, and that's our problem to maintain anyway. If that wind blows it over, that's on us. So it's on our property line, we'll maintain it. And whatever, I can't remember if it was a column every forty feet, or whatever code says for those types of fences, we're, we're complying with that. And Carol can verify that. What else? What else did she say? Yeah, so that's a tricky one, because the soils are really, really bad out there. We will be overexing seventeen feet down, it's a big, big deal. But there are also regulations that we have to follow in terms of de-watering and spraying it. And it would just, would be not sincere for me to say there aren't going to be some issues on a windy day. But, but we absolutely have a plan to mitigate that. We have a great contractor in place, and we're going to do our best. We've already met with the adjacent neighbors, the Goddard School, and, and the neighbor to the south, just giving our cards out, saying, hey, if you see something you don't like during construction, you call us. We are accountable, and we're going to do our best. But it's a construction site for six months.
Do you do silt fencing?
Yes, there, there's all sorts, they call them BMPs. There's a lot of things we have to do for the erosion control and make sure we're not dragging mud, mud onto the streets and things like that.
What's the timing of putting up the fence on the east side?
Yeah, that I don't have a great answer on. I, my guess is it's going to be while we're building the buildings, because we absolutely have to do the, that existing drainage thing that's kind of like rock, a rip, riprock, riprap they call it, that has to be pulled out, new liner, put back in, all the soil has to be corrected. And then once that's done, we can start building the fence. But we just want to make sure the fence doesn't get damaged during construction. It's, it's, it's expensive, it's going to look great, and we don't want to redo it.
And you're talking about the, so your prior comment was referring to the swale there on the east side?
Yes.
About the riprap?
Yeah, so the, the fence is on the east side of that. So that has to be done first.
And what about the parking lot lights? What was the height of those, and would they be?
Uh, that's another one I don't know the answer of, but there, but again, there's, there's requirements for us. They call it cut-down lights or cut?
Yes. Um, the parking lot lights are nineteen feet height, and they're all shielded, and they all have to face down.
They're nineteen feet. The building's twenty-six or twenty-four?
Yeah, I think.
So it is, so they are smaller than the building, but they also do not have the lights that, you know, they have to be downlit.
They don't leak off the property?
Right. It is definitely zero-foot candles at the property line.
Okay, other questions from council? Mr. Jones?
So that, that addresses the night sky ordinance and making sure that all that's taken care of. So there, it sounds like they're following that.
Yes, they're submitting their landscape, as well as their lighting, and that's under, will be under review, and they will have to meet the requirements. Anything that's not being modified tonight, they're going to have to meet the standards.
Okay. And so the, the three changes were the, the parking lot?
Stalls.
Stalls. And remind me the other two?
The trash enclosure being together. And then the landscaping?
To be considered as kind of a whole?
As considered as a shopping center. And I should add that we do have a declaration that's recorded across the shopping center that enforces all of this. It's, but it's standard with, I mean, it's no different than the King Supers across the street. Like, you're going to have First Bank and Wendy's and all this stuff there, but it's going to act as one shopping center.
Okay.
This is similar.
Okay. I, I don't have any other questions, but I'd like to reserve the motion.
Okay. Mr. Marriott, you're next.
Thank you. Take the easy ones, huh? So I, I, actually, I do have a question. I have a question about the, the landscape islands in the parking lot. It looks like you've got seventeen spaces in a line, and so if you were going to put in landscape islands, you'd have a nine and an eight, or, you know, some configuration like that. Can you tell me the reason why you'd like to not comply with that? Are you down to the minimum on parking where that puts you underneath the parking requirement, or what?
Well, we, we meet legal parking requirement, but we don't meet practical parking requirement. And so that's number one issue, is we, we really need every stall we can get. And number two is the soils are really bad out there, so we're trying to keep landscape areas to a minimum in the middle of the lot, because it's very expansive. But again, we, we worked through this enough to where we added a lot of extra trees, but in places where we wanted them.
Right.
Where they're going to be more useful to people.
Okay, good. No, I, thank you for that explanation. I've always thought that, you know, we have to have some parking requirements on commercial developments, but the end users are the ones that really have the parking requirements that matter.
Right.
Whether it be up or down from what our, from what our, our regulations are. Theirs are the ones that truly matter, so responding to the market, I think, is the right answer. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Mr. Fiver?
So, clarification on Building B, C, and D. You will not put any signs on the eastern side of those buildings?
Correct.
Because you said C, but I didn't hear B and D.
All three of them. We will not have any signs facing east.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Ford?
I like the idea of the trash being in one area. What, what's the greatest distance that building?
And it is a difficult piece of land, because you do have homeowners that are there, and so I applaud you in working with the, the adjacent homeowners to ensure that they were heard and that their needs were met, and, and ultimately brought something that people will benefit from and will be used greatly. It's a, you know, those are the exact types of places, you know, as I read down the list, I don't know if these are tenants already, but those are the exact kind of amenities that, and services that people are asking for, so thank you for doing that. So I obviously will be supporting this motion and appreciate the work that you've done as a group and with the neighbors, and I hope that it turns out really, really awesome.
Ms. Ford?
Well, I wanted to also thank you, because I think it's a great project. It's, you know, a real nice improvement from what was there originally being proposed. And I, I too, as Mr. Jones said, I really appreciate when developers work directly with neighbors to make a good project that people can enjoy, so thank you.
Okay, all votes cast. I'm going to also indicate to, I mean, talk about night and day between the previous application for this property. Council chambers was packed with, with individuals who, and probably the applicant did themselves a disservice when they gave us a really good presentation that included what the impact of that self-storage was going to be on this property. Obviously, you've worked with the neighbors. The fact that Council chambers is not packed is an indication that they're much more accepting of this proposal, and so I will certainly be supporting. And it passes seven to zero. Very good. Next, reports from city, or public comment, anybody wish to address City Council at this time? Seeing none, I'll close that public comment portion and open it up for reports from City Council. Anybody have anything? Ms. Ford? I'm sorry, Mr. Pfeifer?
Okay. Well, I want to make council aware that on October 8th, which is what, is that tomorrow? That is tomorrow. Dr. Cog will be hosting its Citizens Academy in Old Town tomorrow. I'll be greeting everyone from the Citizens Academy, which was formerly known, I believe, as the Transit Alliance Academy, if anyone attended that. We'll be coming into Old Town. Carrie from Urban Renewal will be there to do a presentation. I will be greeting the class. They'll be coming in on the G-line, and Urban Renewal will be doing a presentation and will give a tour of Old Town. I believe the bid will be talking as well, if I know that correctly, they'll, they'll give a presentation, and then we will be giving a tour of our Old Town Transit hub tomorrow night, so between 6:00 and 9:00 o'clock tomorrow night, so it's good to get people from all over the region to come in and get a little taste of Arvada. That's all I have.
Very good, Ms. Ford?
Well, I wanted to report on a trip that the Sustainability Advisory Committee made to NREL last week, thanks to one of the scientists who is on the, our committee, Keith, I don't know Keith's last name, but great person. And it was very exciting to find out that NREL actually has a program where cities can utilize their resources and strengths, and they actually will look at traffic patterns in a city and give guidance as to, you know, better routes and all kinds of advice like that. So it was very, very interesting, and also to see some of the things that they've done to their own campus. And a very interesting trip, I would recommend anyone doing it in the future.
Very good. Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we, next week, we will have a presentation, and I'm actually looking very forward to this, at the Workshop Pedestrian Safety Pilot Projects at West 57th Avenue, Grandview Avenue, Webster. Couple of areas where we've received some input from the community and frankly, from council members about concerns in those areas, and also an update from our communications manager on communications and engagement strategy.
Very good. Ms. Morris, we've officially made you our city attorney tonight, congratulations.
Thank you. I, I want to thank all of you again. I am so excited about this opportunity to serve the city in this new capacity.
Good. With that, we are adjourned. Thank you.